No reportable actions taken. We were just reviewing some legal conditions and some negotiations to update on the status, and there were no decisions made that are to be reported out. We will now move into the regular open session, and again, we'll go through roll call.
Council agency member Lingal.
Here.
Rouge.
Here.
Durham.
Present.
Mayor Protem Vice Chair Martner.
Present.
Mayor Chair Samenski.
The agenda says that Pastor Bernie Fetterman was going to be here tonight, but he is unable to make it. I've asked Councilman Durham to lead us tonight, if he will, in an invocation, and we'll follow that with a pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
You bow your heads, please. Lord, we want to thank you for watching over us today, be with us at this meeting tonight, help this council to make the wise decisions for the community at large, be with our servicemen and women who are overseas in harm's way, bless those that are here on our own soil trying to survive what's happened to them overseas. We pray that you'll watch over us, guide us, and strengthen us. These things we pray. Amen.
Please say with me the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have some proclamations to present at this time. Stacy, did you pick up the ones that went up here? You've got them all there? Okay, good. Mr. Holloway is the Chair of the Utility Commission. Our first proclamation tonight is a proclamation declaring Public Power Week. Whereas the citizens of Lompoc have owned and operated their own electric utilities since 1923 to maintain local control over community services and to obtain competitive, reasonable electric rates, and whereas in order to continue to provide safe, reliable, competitive electric services to the owners and business community, the City of Lompoc in 1968 became a charter member of the Northern California Power Agency, which has enabled Lompoc to not only distribute purchased electricity, but also to be a generator of our own electricity. And whereas the City of Lompoc has become part owner of electric generation plants that produce green power, non-polluting geothermal and non-polluting hydroelectric power, and whereas the City of Lompoc in the past, currently, and in the future, will continue to purchase and produce electricity to provide its citizens and businesses with a service that maintains competitive rates, and whereas Lompoc City Electric is a valuable community asset that contributes to the well-being of its citizens through reliable service, through energy efficiency assistance, through excellent customer service, through environmental protection and safety awareness, and whereas Lompoc City Electric provides electric safety demonstrations to elementary grades, kindergarten through the sixth grade upon request, now therefore, I am Mike Samenski, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, join with other electric utilities in celebrating Public Power Week, the week of October 3 through 9, in honor of the Lompoc City Electric. I've signed this effective today, and I'm happy to present this to Bob Holloway, Chair of our commission. Nationwide, there are over 2,000 municipalities that are publicly owned, have publicly owned electric systems. In California, the number is about 40, but some states, there's one state, and I think it's Nebraska, is 100% public power, no private companies in that state. But Bob, do you have something you want to say on these?
I accept this on behalf of the Complete Utility Commission Vice Chairs, Mr. Munt, Mr. Hohmdel, Mr. Pierce, and Mr. Michaels. We have a very good mix of ideas on the commission, and we have some lively discussions. I would like to thank Ron Stasi, Utilities Director, for making our job very easy. I would also like to thank, on behalf of the committee, all the staff who attend our meetings and give us the needed input to make our decisions. Also, I would like to give praise to the Electrical Division for all their hard work in keeping our lights on at all costs. So when you see these men repairing poles and wiring on your streets in Lompoc, give them some thanks.
Next, we have tandem proclamations. The subject of the next proclamation was important enough, the two different organizations that asked us to declare this Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and we have a proclamation to the Police Department, and we also have a proclamation to Domestic Violence Solutions, and they both read almost the same. So I'll ask, if you will, Chief Dabney, is that a blow? Come forward, please. And I'll also ask Violence Solutions Client Advocates Angela Angelica Baron and Dial Arias, come forward. And I said we have tandem proclamations. They both read, whereas historically and presently, women have been and continue to be victims of intimate partner violence, and the crime of domestic violence is not confined to any group or groups of people, but crosses all economic, racial, and social groups. And whereas one woman every 15 seconds is assaulted in America by her spouse or cohabitant, usually causing physical injury, violating her privacy, leaving her bankrupt of self-respect and dignity, and resulting in an imprint of fear, and whereas children are emotionally abused by witnessing family violence, many growing up to repeat the pattern as the next generation of abusers or victims, and whereas one in three teenagers report that violence is a part of their dating relationship, and whereas Domestic Violence Solutions for Santa Barbara County has been providing safe, confidential shelter and other vital services for battered women and their children for over 20 years, and whereas the Lompoc Police Department's Victim Abuse Position has been providing vital advocacy services for battered women and their children for the past 13 years, now the Domestic Violence Awareness Month is aimed at focusing community-wide attention on battered women and promotes the support of shelters and other programs which serve them. Whereas the Lompoc Police Department and the Domestic Violence Solutions for Santa Barbara County has requested the partnership of all residents in Santa Barbara County in seeking a total elimination of domestic violence in our communities, now therefore, I am Mike Samenski, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2010 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I am pleased to present these certificates for you and who's been received for domestic violence. Thank you. Would you like to say something?
I would. Thank you, Mayor Samenski, and thank you to the Lompoc community and the council for being here tonight and just supporting our community as a whole. It's so important to join together. One person can't end domestic violence. It really does take our entire community just to stand firm and just to say, no, no, we're not going to accept this in our community. Lompoc's better than that. We're better than family violence, and I truly believe in our community, and I know that we can eradicate this from our community and from our county as a whole. I just wanted to let you know that we do have a candle vigil scheduled for tomorrow evening in the courtyard here at City Hall at 6 o'clock. We are trying to highlight teen dating violence. Unfortunately, teen dating violence is on the rise. We have had an increased number in Lompoc, and so I think it's really important that we try to stop this early on with our teenagers and let them know that this is just not an acceptable behavior. So I just want to thank my partners, Domestic Violence Solution Advocates, as well as Pauline Chewie from Vandenberg Air Force Base Family Advocacy Program. We've had a great time just partnering with one another, trying to end this cycle of generational violence, so thank you.[621.41][621.41](APPLAUSE).
That's it? We have another proclamation declaring the month of October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and the month of November as End Domestic Violence Month to the Seroptimists International. Lompoc President Louz Bolz, please come forward. This is a proclamation declaring October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and November as End Domestic Violence Month. Whereas October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month and November is National End Domestic Violence Month, and whereas in 2009, an estimated 211,240-plus new cases of female breast cancer and 2,000 cases of male breast cancer were diagnosed, and mammography is recognized as the most effective method of detecting breast changes that may be cancer long before physical symptoms can be seen or felt. And whereas domestic violence is a serious and violent social problem that exists in all economic segments of society, in all cultures, and in all countries of the world, and whereas some Seroptimists are in a position worldwide to educate everyone, especially women, that they have the right to feel safe and to live free from violence, and that they have access to breast cancer prevention information and services, and whereas the Seroptimists End Domestic Violence and Breast Cancer Awareness Workplace Campaigns are ongoing, Seroptimist efforts to promote awareness, advocacy, and action, and whereas Seroptimists, an international volunteer organization of business and professional women who work to improve the lives of women and girls in local communities and throughout the world, has launched a region-wide campaign called Color Me Pink for Breast Cancer and Purple for Domestic Violence. Now therefore, I am Mike Samenski, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, do hereby proclaim October 2010 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and again, November 2010 as End Domestic Violence Month, and I am pleased to present this to Gail Clark Savage, representing the Seroptimists. Would you like to say something?
I want to thank you for this honor and to mention the fact that Seroptimists has been around for many, many years. As they said, it is recognized throughout the world, even to advising the United Nations on status of women and what's happening with them throughout the world. We really do work here in Lompoc to better the women's situations, and we want to thank the community for supporting us in our fundraisers, which then provide funds to these various places such as Domestic Violence, the Rape Crisis Center, to help their work continue. So thank you very much.[826.81][826.81](APPLAUSE).
At this time, I'd like to ask the members of the Human Services Commission that are here to come up and stand with me, and I'd like to ask Connie Setlock to come up so that we can recognize her long, fine service on the Human Services Commission. Mrs. Setlock, Ms. Setlock served on the Human Services Commission for 13 years. During that time, she served as the Vice Chair and as the Commission Chair. As a registered nurse, she used her knowledge of public health and community issues to assist the Commission on directing resources to the greatest needs. Mrs. Setlock has also served on the Board of Directors for the Local Mental Health Association, the North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Agency. She was a Red Cross volunteer, and she has served as a CASA advocate and as a rape crisis counselor. The members, Joshua's not here. Okay, we have Barbara Holt, the Chair of the Human Services Commission, Paul Sina, the Vice Chair, Shirley Tognetti.
Pamela.
Pardon?
Pamela Meadows.
Pamela Meadows, and Joshua Craig, I don't see here. He's our newest member, was appointed actually to replace Mrs. Setlock. Connie, it's a pleasure to recognize a service with a black that I hope you're proud to display. It does represent a lot of time, effort, sweat, tears from the Human Services Commission. I commend you for your service to the community.
Thank you.
And I invite you to say something, if you'd like.
I want to thank the mayor and the council for this, but also for the Human Services Commission. I know the hours they put into work, and they've done so much good for the nonprofit agencies, and I have really enjoyed working with them.
We have one other item under the heading of Presentations on tonight's agenda, and that is a presentation on the status of the Charlotte's Web Library, presented by Library
Good evening, Mayor Samenski and council. The library staff and trustees are here to report on the status of the Charlotte's Web Children's Library Project. First, I will provide background and overview, virtual tour of the facility, and then President of the Library Board of Trustees, Alan Clark, will update you on the project's status. The CAL Ed Economic Development Team recently advised that one important component of economic development is telling the stories. Charlotte Benton grew up in Germany during a time of great hardship prior to World War II. She spent many hours in a children's library made possible by a private donation. Her love of reading and libraries stayed with her. After the war, she immigrated to the U.S. and later moved to Lompoc. She became our first woman city council member and then first woman mayor in 1977. She was also an entrepreneur, opening an electric car business in 1979. Remembering the children's library of her youth, Ms. Benton donated property and funds for a children's library in Lompoc. This is a story that we should take pride in as a city. We need to complete this legacy project. Now, our virtual tour begins at 211 South I Street. We see a wide patio, a pergola, a shaky hand, and a window. So turning into the parking lot, you can see the entrance. There's a main doorway for adults, and on either side are two small doorways to welcome children to the library. The building also features solar panels and straw bale insulation and many other features. And these features are not just good for the environment, they will also lower the utility costs of Charlotte's Web for years to come. Inside the facility, the 4,800-square-foot facility will contain shelving for 17,500 books and other materials. In the upper-right corner, you see a glass-walled homework center, shelving for the, excuse me, seating for the youngest children through middle-school-age children, and the open-floor plan allows one staff member stationed at the circulation desk to have a clear line of sight into this entire area. If we go back to the entrance and take a left, we see a physical reference to the story of Charlotte's Web. There are two barn doors that roll back to reveal a 500-square-foot storytime space. It can be extended to the rear to a walled patio for large events. The restrooms and the staffing area are accessed through a common hallway. This is a very elegant, but a practical and energy-efficient facility. Now back to the background of the project that we've just toured. Excuse me, there we go. In 1996, Charlotte Benton advised the city of her intent to donate her property on South I Street to become a children's library. In 97, she donated 40% of the property to the city, although she continued to live in the residence. Ms. Benton also placed assets in trust to cover the salaries, operation, and maintenance of the future library. In 2002, Ms. Benton moved and completed the donation of her property, and the city assumed management of the project. The city applied for a $1.2 million State Bond Act grant for library construction in 2004, but the project was not selected, and this possible funding source was gone. In 2005, the city determined that remodeling the Benton home in its deteriorated state would be much more expensive than new construction, and the structures on the property were demolished. At the end of 2005, Charlotte Benton passed away. The library board and city council approved continuing the project. In 2006, a memorandum of understanding was prepared to lay the groundwork for moving the project forward. The three signatories were the City of Lompoc, the Benton Trustees, and the Library Foundation. The critical points of the MOU relate to project ownership and operation of the library. First, the city will design, construct, operate, and maintain the facility as a public library as long as adequate funding is available. Second, the gift of property was accepted with the condition that the library would operate with no expense to the city, except for the contribution of reasonable and necessary staff work during project construction. And third, the library director will arrange for completion of construction funding through redevelopment agency and community development block grant programs, along with donations and other sources. With the MOU in place, the project could move forward, and now Library Trustee Al Clark will continue the presentation.
Good evening. I'd like to begin with a brief overview of the design development phase of the project. This phase began after council approved the conceptual design for Charlotte's Web in February of 2008. The purpose of design development is to perform more detailed engineering of the design concept. The end product is a construction drawing package. In December 2009, the architect Revat, Albrecht, and Associates submitted the Charlotte's Web construction drawing package to the city for plan check. We anticipate plan check approval and issuance of the building permit by December of this year. Next, I'd like to talk about our private sector fundraising efforts. Here's how we fared in the past five years. As you can see, we haven't enjoyed much success. It became increasingly clear that we needed to change our approach. So in March 2009, the Library Foundation hired Netcell Grigsby Associates to conduct the first phase of a fundraising campaign. The firm performed a four-month campaign feasibility study, which included interviews with 33 individuals, two Library Foundation Board members, two library donors, 14 community leaders, Charlotte Benton's stepdaughter, and 14 residents involved in our community. The study was designed to assess the strength of the case for the project, does the Library Foundation have the necessary skills for a campaign effort, and is the campaign goal attainable? Here's what the study showed. Charlotte's Web has strong support, and it meets a significant need. Reduced school library hours have increased this need. The Library Foundation Board members were not recruited with the expectation of securing large gifts. Thus, it would require a new recruiting effort and/or training to develop that capability. More time, more money. And, most importantly, significant major gift potential to support the campaign goal of $3 million was not identified. The formula Netcell uses to determine this is one gift of $500,000 and two gifts of $250,000 are needed to kickstart a campaign of this size. Contributing factors were the state of the economy and competition from Lompoc Community Hospitals' capital campaign. As a side note, some interviewees believed the construction cost to be too high, so we did some research. Data from the December 15, 2009 issue of the Library Journal shows that at $298 per square foot, the cost of Charlotte's Web is below the average cost of comparable-sized libraries built in California between 2006 and 2009. Here's a look at the data. It includes all California libraries under 10,000 square feet that were completed between 2006 and 2009. We did not cherry-pick the data. The darker bar is the library size scaled to fit on the chart, and the lighter bar is the cost per square foot. As you can see, Charlotte's Web, which is over here in the extreme left, compares favorably. The new Santa Maria Library is not included due to its size, 59,850 square feet, but just for comparison, its cost was $311 per square foot. Okay, now back to fundraising. I think we all recognize that there's even greater financial uncertainty in America today than there was a year ago when the study was conducted. This uncertainty has affected the source of large gifts, the small business owners and high-income earners. The bottom line is that private sector fundraising for this project is not likely to improve in the near term. Next, I'd like to discuss three options for the project. We could proceed with the present building configuration, and here are the advantages. This facility will truly be a jewel in the redevelopment area. It will be a destination location that will attract people to the old-town area as it becomes more active with merchants, commuters, and community activities. The obvious downside would be funding availability. Another option we considered is to use modular construction, thinking it would be less expensive. Three vendors were contacted, and per their request, they were each provided a copy of the project drawings. Unfortunately, only one, Enviroplex, responded, and their cost estimate was about $60,000, or 4% less than Revat's. However, their estimate did not include some of the basics for this facility, and it omitted many of the energy conservation features included in Revat's design, so this option is not very attractive. The third option is to return the gift to the Benton Trust. We needn't dwell on this too long. The pluses and minuses are pretty obvious. You may have noticed that we have not included the option of using the trust assets to expand the children's section of the Lompoc Library. That is because the Benton Trust specifies that the assets are to be used to operate a children's library on the South I Street property that Charlotte Benton gifted. a children's library on the South Eye Street property that Charlotte Benton gifted to the city, so we do not really have that option. We believe the best choice is option one, so let's look at the cost of this option. Here you see our best estimate. I'll bring your attention to a couple of areas. The asterisks denote items that are dependent on the building construction cost. Those asterisks. These items will increase or decrease along with the construction cost. Also, note the $252K for city permits, fees, and staff costs. Those are right here. We'll talk more about both of these on the next slide. You can see, the bottom line is a little over $3.5 million. Now, let's look at what it would take to get this jewel built. Maybe, yes. Here we see the cost of the project from the previous page up here in the upper right: the funds allocated or in hand, right here, and the funds not committed. Let me explain the funds not committed. These are items that could decrease the funding gap, but they're not yet allocated. City permits, fees, and staff costs are a good example. This was a cost shown on the previous page of $252K. It is now zero here because those charges have not yet been waived, so you see the zero right there. If council were to waive those charges, the $252K would be entered here, and the bottom-line funding gap would be decreased accordingly. Okay, now, let's look at the bid timing differential, this bottom part here. This line addresses those items marked with an asterisk on the prior slide. They're a percentage of the building construction cost. Lately, we've heard that some construction bids are coming in as much as 33% below the estimate, but we've used a conservative 10%, as you see there. So if bids come in more than 10% below our estimate, the funding gap will be less than For example, let's say the city fees were waived, and bids come in at 20% below our estimate. This would result in the funding gap being reduced by the $252K of city fees, excuse me, plus another $228K for the additional 10% bid differential, so the funding gap would then become about $2 million, a significant reduction. Next, let's quickly review what our team is doing now. The most important thing we can accomplish tonight is to convince you and the staff to take a long, hard look at finding a way to get this project funded as soon as possible. No one can predict how long the construction discounts will last, and Charlotte's Web will be ready for bid in about two months. Meanwhile, we're continuing to work with the architect to find additional cost reductions and are preparing a formal request that you waive the city permits, fees, and staff costs. Okay, then, in summary, the Lompoc Library was built in 1969. Our city's population has increased significantly in the past 40 years, so it is inevitable that our public facilities have needed to expand, and many of them have, but the library has not. Charlotte's Web is a very cost-effective way to provide a much-needed expansion because it comes with 15 to 20 years of operation and maintenance costs paid for. In difficult economic times, we need to capitalize on opportunities like this. We just won't get a better deal. The city has an obligation to build Charlotte's Web, so it should be high on our priority list. Charlotte's Web will have a positive impact on economic development by enhancing the quality of life in our community. It is the kind of public facility that will help us to attract educated, middle-income earners, and what CalEd calls "export companies." It will be a jewel in the redevelopment area and a source of civic pride, and again, it will be ready for bid in two months. In conclusion, our late, beloved mayor, Dick Dewey, believes the community's library is a reflection of its soul. We would like to think that our community will find it in its soul to build this much-needed library for its children. We ask that you find a way to make Charlotte Web Children's Library a reality now. Thank you all.
We've had a number of requests lately. Okay, public comment period, right?
Hello, my name is Valenci Via. I'm an eighth grader at La Prisma Catholic School. I was shocked and also disappointed that they did not build the Charlotte's Web library. This would be great for walking distance for all students, good for all students kindergarten through eighth grade. We could use the computers there for research and after-school to do homework. Thank you.
Hold, hold, just a second. Let me explain a couple things to the audience. In the past, under presentations, it was an informational presentation to the public. We didn't really open it up for public comments. But more and more lately, we have had requests for the council to take an action during the presentation or the staff period. So, and I know many of you are here and you want to speak to this, so we will open it up for comment on this. We will also open it up for comment on the resolution on Measure S-10. We'll open it up for comment on the CalEd program, and we'll then, during oral communications, go to any comments on consent calendar, and when we go to the general plan update, we'll again open it up for public comment periods. So if you want to speak on this issue, the library now, we'll try to limit the comments at this time to just the library. Thank you, please.
Good evening. I'm Kitty McKenzie. I'm vice moderator of the Valley of the Flowers United Church of Christ. A member of our church, Kay Eaton, has followed this issue from its inception and has kept us all informed. When we were alerted to Mrs. Derald's presentation tonight, our church council voted unanimously, nine to zero, to support her and the library. In our view, delay in development of Charlotte's Web is an example of allowing the powerless to bear the brunt of our financial times. Balancing the budget on the back of poor children is unconscionable. Please, seize this opportunity so that we can move forward together. We didn't rehearse this. I am Kay Eaton, and back in 2003, 2004, I am still a member of the Lompoc Library Foundation and was director of curriculum for the school district. We worked with the foundation in writing the grant to the state library to get this approved. We were very close to having it approved. Then, a couple of years later, there was a bond measure that did not pass that would have funded it. At that same time, the school board passed a resolution dedicating Lompoc Unified School District's support of the libraries, Charlotte's Web in particular, but all of the community libraries, and we have been working even more diligently this year to make sure that we have required and recommended books in the library as well as textbooks. You have in your folders, I believe, a resolution that has been updated from the Lompoc School Board, of which I am now the clerk, because we are not done yet educating and taking care of our children, and also a letter from Susan Williams, the principal of Lompoc Adult Ed, who has worked diligently to provide classes and programs for parents, particularly of young children, and working with training them to be better parents. So we are hoping that you will find some magical ways to help us make this happen, and I am hoping that you will join us in supporting Charlotte's Web Children's Library Learning Center. Thank you very much.
City Council, Steve Bjork. Our family owns a restaurant, which is just a stone's throw away from where this development will go. And Molly asked me, first of all, how many people are here to support Charlotte's Web Library? Okay? There's a lot of customers right there, okay? Anyway, not a day goes by as well that my wife and I, with our new baby, our child walks up with a book and asks us to read. She constantly comes around and says, "Read, mommy, read daddy." In fact, the other day, she went to the dog and said, "Read," okay? And Molly asked me to talk about economic development. You know, there's a new mural in Art Alley, which has brought a lot of people, onlookers and sightseers. If a mural can bring down people downtown, a library can bring people downtown. We're talking about carloads and busloads of people using a facility and then emptying out into the local community and spending dollars. We encourage you to support this project. Thank you.
Seeing no one else move up to the podium, I'll close the public comment period. Ms. Marner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to take this opportunity, and I really like to thank the public for coming here tonight and letting us know how you feel about this. What I personally feel is a very important project, so I would like to make an agenda item request. The agenda item request is to direct staff to provide an analysis of potential funding that could be used toward this project. Bring this analysis to the council at a further date where the council can deliberate and discuss the routing of potential funds for the construction of Charlotte's Web, and I will need two other council members to back me up so it can actually come into the agenda.
Let me interject something and see if we can't. Shortly, right after the next election, we'll seat a new council, and their first duty is going to be approve the budget for next year, both the general fund, city budget, and the redevelopment budget that they're asking money for. The request to waive fees, most of those fees go into the general fund, and I think that we ought to take this as a priority along with the budget at that time to see what the cost can be and how we can prioritize it at that time. Would you accept an amended motion to ask that this be included in the first go-around of the budget preparations for the new council?
I would like to have, to see this actually this year before December. I mean, as we heard the presentation here, we're talking about something that is shovel-ready in December, so I would like to step it up in the priority, and I maintain my motion that way.
I'd like to second that.
We have a motion, a second, and a third?
Yeah, I'll give it a third. I just want to mention, the city has always been in favor and support of Charlotte's Web Library. I was on planning commission several years ago, and you all came then, and I know the city has always been in support of it, so I know we'll all do our best to make this a reality.
All right, we have a request to put this on the agendas as soon as possible with an analysis of the fees and where they might come from. Let's cast our votes. That passes unanimously. Next is council redevelopment agency requests and announcements, and again, this was, as a result of a request, we have a resolution before us. Mr. Durham, you asked that this be on the agenda. Would you like to introduce it?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Measure S. It's for the benefit of everyone. I know no one is happy about a new tax, no matter how small it is, but listening to the presentation that the sheriff gave at the last council meeting, it's very evident that not only has the county done their best to come up with alternatives, they feel that this is by far the answer to what we're going to need as far as housing, location. If we don't do it, like the sheriff said, it's going to be a revolving door even if you're a felon. And I don't know about you, but I personally don't want to know that a friend of mine arrested you for a felony, and you're out on the street before my friend is, writing the report. So I made the request that we make a resolution that the council supports Measure S, and I still hold that.
Thank you. City Administrator/Executive Director Status Report is an informational item. Do you have anything you want to add to that, Ms. Barcelona?
Mr. Mayor, city council, audience, and viewers, I'd like to take this opportunity to announce my selection of Ms. Stacy Alvarez to the position of city clerk. Ms. Alvarez has worked in the office of the city clerk for five years, over five years, and most recently, worked in the capacity of acting city clerk, and I am confident that Ms. Alvarez will serve the city well in this position. Thank you.
Next is any staff requests and announcements either. Can we combine those two? Let me open this at this time for anyone from the public that would like to speak. Bill?
Thank you, Bill Mullins. I know the reports are saying that we need more jails, and we need more jails, and I personally am opposed to it. I may not be in a majority, but we don't need more jails, we need more jobs. The best crime fighter we have is jobs, so I don't think it's the thing that we need to do now, so I'm opposed to it. Thank you.
Sheriff Brown.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You'll be pleased to know I do not have a PowerPoint tonight with me. I would like to just reiterate a few points, though, about Measure S, which I think are exceptionally important, and maybe address this gentleman's concerns about it as well. First of all, Measure S is really, truly, the most important public safety initiative that has ever been put before the voters in Santa Barbara County. This measure will do three things. It will allow us to build and operate a limited-size, 304-bed jail facility in the North County, in the Santa Maria area. It will allow us to spend significant funding on prevention, intervention, rehabilitation, recovery, and alternative to incarceration programs, which are designed to keep people out of jail or stop repeat offenses, and slow that revolving door, which is just going around again and again and again and putting people back into custody. And then, lastly, it will augment public safety throughout the county and all jurisdictions, including the City of Lompoc, to make up for some of the drastic cuts that have occurred as a result of the economic downturn. The City of Lompoc would see over $800,000 a year come to the community that could be budgeted for public safety services, police and fire, any combination thereof. Another major benefit to Measure S... Another major benefit to Measure S is exactly what my predecessor here at the podium was talking about, its jobs. This is not only an $80 million construction project here in the North County with a significant number of construction jobs attached to it, but it's also 150 to 200 additional jobs connected with the jail, connected with the prevention and intervention programs, connected with the frontline public safety assets that would come here into the North County as well. Every single penny of this fund would go back, this measure would go back into our local community and would be used for one purpose, and that is to protect the public safety. Now, I agree that taxes should always be a last resort, but sometimes taxes are necessary. We have a very unique opportunity here with this measure, and that is to enact a tiny tax at the same time that we're seeing a rebate or a rollback, if you will, of the existing state sales tax. We're going to see the sales tax go back one cent, and this would go forward again a half cent. So the net effect to the consumer on July the 1st, 2011, when this would kick in, would be we'd see our current tax rate of 8.75% drop to 8.25%, and we still would all get the collective benefit of Measure S. I ask you tonight for your support behind Measure S. You would join a long list of supporters from throughout our county, from the north and the south, from the left and the right, from everywhere in between. We have six newspaper editorial boards that have endorsed Measure S, including the Lompoke Record. We have public safety leaders and organizations from throughout the county. We have elected officials, as I say, from the Republican, the Democratic Parties, independents, decline to state, all across the political spectrum. People who recognize, who wouldn't normally agree on things, but who recognize that Measure S is a significantly important initiative that we can all get behind. So I ask you and I ask the viewing public and the citizens of Lompoke to not allow their frustration with the situation that we face ourselves, or find ourselves faced with in the country, in the state. There's a lot of anger and a lot of angst that people have. But this is truly the way to solve a problem, a perplexing problem which has haunted us for more than 30 years in Santa Barbara County. And this is truly the mechanism to solve it. So I ask you and thank you for your support.
Thank you, Sheriff Brown.
I'm Charles Blair. I'm a resident of Vandenberg Village and have lived in the area since 1994. Actually, I grew up in Pass Robles, so I'm very familiar with this part of the country. Anyway, I would like to speak in support of Measure S. None of us like taxes, but I think this is a necessary thing. I recall shortly after I moved to this area, there was, I think, a move to build a jail in North County. Nobody liked to see more jails. Jails are not the answer. But I, what I'm seeing is with the current overcrowding and mandatory sentences, this is mandatory sentences, relative minor drug offenders with mandatory sentences are kept in because of overcrowding and violent offenders are having to be released. I don't like taxes any more than anybody else. I'm willing to pay my share, but I think that this, I would support Mr. Durham and the council and Sheriff Mayor on this issue. Thank you.
If the, let's, we can go through this a little bit quicker if we don't stop for applause. If there's anybody else who would like to speak, if you'd line up.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. My name is John Thermas. I'm a longtime resident of Lompoke. And I just, I wasn't actually planning to speak about this, but I'm really opposed to this measure for a variety of reasons. The first one is that when you talk about extra jobs, when you're talking about jobs in a public sector versus a private sector, jobs in a public sector mean higher taxes to pay for those jobs versus being in a private sector where the natural flow of monies are paid for those jobs. So you're talking about something that's going to constantly cost you more money over time. The other thing I've been reading about the last couple of years are that 30% of our jails throughout the entire country are filled full of illegal aliens. So I think if our country resolves that problem, that's going to reduce our jail population by probably 30%, which may resolve the issue without having to build a second, another jail. So those are my two biggest concerns, where that all those monies are going from taxes to pay for more jobs and facilities that will constantly require more and more upkeep, so the tax is going to have to be raised over forever to maintain those jails we may not need down the road when our illegal population is resolved. Thank you very much.
Who's next?
Hi, my name is Mark Buscaran. I'm a longtime Lompoke resident, and I have to express my opposition to additional tax. During these economic times, we see that we have difficulties in building libraries. I've got to head, I've had to tighten my belt. Every single penny, I just heard some words, every single penny is going to go to safety. I need to ask everyone to have a copy of this ordinance mailed to them by calling the elections office, because on the back page it does say the auditor controller of Santa Barbara County will be receiving one-half of 1% as their fee for dispersing this money. Now, I don't know what the auditor controller does, but it sounds like they're doing their job by writing checks. And now we're going to give them money out of this to continue doing their job. Again, tough economic times. It's not 100% going to what the sheriff just said it was. As I understand it, a half percent is going to the disbursement of the funds. Tough economic times, so think twice before you back this measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaran. Does anyone else like to speak at this time? Seeing no one rise or move towards the podium, we'll close the public comment period on this item. What are the wishes of the, of the council? Do you, Tony, it's your item. Would you want to make a motion or say?
I have a question regarding some of the public comment, and I don't know who the appropriate person would be to answer it, but I would expect it's the sheriff. And I would, I would like to know whether the council would allow some of the answers.
Sure.
So I guess my question to you, what is this half cent that we just heard about?
Well, it's a, all of these funds would be collected through the county of Santa Barbara as part of the taxation system. And those funds would be distributed to the various entities that would benefit from Measure S, the city of Lompoke being one, for example. And the auditor controller is the person in the county that collects these taxes and makes these dispersments. So the, what the gentleman was referring to is a pretty standard administrative fee that would be based on any type of taxation that would be distributed to multiple entities.
And this disbursement is what we're talking about, what goes back to cities or various different programs?
Correct.
In addition to building the jail?
It's the administrative, no, no, no. It's the administrative function of collecting the tax and then dividing it up and sending it to the respective entities. In this case, it's done once a month to the various entities. So it's a, it's a small fraction of the total cost that goes to pay for the assessor's costs in distributing those funds.
Okay, thank you, Senator.
And it's a very standard procedure that you'd have in any kind of public dispersment like this.
You want, wait there a second. Are there any other questions, the sheriff?
I have one, Sheriff. I didn't talk to this, to you about this earlier. The amount that is going to be distributed, is that like the best estimate of sales taxes that would come in?
It's an estimate that's based on 30, the $30 million estimate of what it would bring in. That would fluctuate potentially from year to year. But the assessor's office, when they actually made this best guess, if you will, of what, in other words, it was what, what was based on the total amount of revenue that was brought in three years ago with the county. Had it been done last year, it would have been, last, had it been done this year, it would have been slightly less. Had it been, and it's going to take effect from July the 1st of 2011 to July the 1st of 2012. And the best guess estimate from the assessor is that it would be in the vicinity of $30 million. So all of the figures that you've seen are based on rounded off at a $30 million amount that would be achieved. But whatever, whatever the amount is, it's going to be one-half percent of the total sales tax that's spent in the county.
Right. And so then the distribution of funds would be on a percentage basis, for instance, the different-
Correct. It's all done on a per capita basis.
Yeah.
It's a per capita formula. And those, those amounts that you have in front of you are estimates based on per capita.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lingle?
Yes, also for the sheriff. Now, I may have misunderstood Mr. Blair, but I thought Mr. Blair indicated that minor offenders were being kept in jail and violent offenders were being left out. It's my understanding that right now, the only people that are being kept in jail are the violent offenders and pretty much no one else is going to jail. Is that correct?
It's, it's, the people that are in jail now are overwhelmingly felons and overwhelmingly in there for serious offenses that could include crimes such as violent crimes, could include property crimes that are felonious property crimes. I think what the doctor was referring to is probably what's happening at the federal level, where you have federal sentencing guidelines which put people in federal prison for certain periods of time. But in our jail, I can tell you that we do not have, as I told you at the last presentation, we have eliminated our honor farm because we don't have the type of petty criminal which we used to have in jail, people that commit thefts, people that commit drunk-driving offenses and those sorts of things. Those people typically are arrested, booked, fingerprinted and photographed, and then released on a citation, promised to appear, and then dealt with in a court case. And most of them go straight to an own recognizance release or have some kind of probation, most of it summary probation on minor offenses. Where our overcrowding situation has resulted in pushing almost all of our sentenced prisoners out of jail. We currently have 81% of the people in the county's jail who are there pre-sentence, they're awaiting trial, and 80% are awaiting trial for felony crimes. And they are awaiting trial, that leaves only 19%, about 190 people at any given time that are in jail, serving sentences that the courts have imposed on them for violation of misdemeanors or felonies where they have been sentenced to a year or less in the county jail.
And then one last thing. It may have been during your presentation last time, but if so, I'll let you repeat it. But I'd heard recently that one of the offenders that was recently left out had been released and then pursued, or proceeded to commit a murder locally? Is that-
That was in 2006. Someone who had been arrested, served less than 20% of their sentence, was released early because of the court-ordered population cap, and within hours had gotten high on drugs and shot and killed a 60-year-old grandfather in Santa Barbara, the city of Santa Barbara. And, you know, that's precisely the type of crime that I don't want to see repeated again. And that's why I think that it's important that we have the sufficient jail space required to hold people in jail for the period of time that the court sentences them to. If someone's not in jail during the time that they were imposed by the court, then you have a breakdown of the criminal justice system.
Thank you.
Sheriff, I have a question. Maintenance of effort, the money that comes to the city of Lompoke, for instance. I've heard it said that we must supplement and not supplant-
Correct.
-expenditures within the city. So if we have a tight budget situation and we were proposing to extend the furloughs or the reduction, or salary reduction, could that be used to make up salaries for our, for our existing workload or-
It can't be used to make up salaries, but what can happen, it is, there is a maintenance of effort clause in the resolution. And the no supplantation language specifically addresses making sure that no city or the county takes the money from Measure S for public safety and then doesn't spend the money that it's currently spending on public safety and spends it on something else, for example. It's to bolster the existing frontline public safety, both in police and fire. However, that doesn't mean that the city or the county couldn't reduce its public safety expenditures if there was another economic downturn or if the revenues just aren't there. And what it says is that you can't reduce public safety any more than you can reduce the rest of the general fund. So in other words, you couldn't drop public safety 20% and then drop everyone else in the city 5%. As long as you're, you're dropping because you have to and it's on a uniform basis, you have the ability to ratchet back. And the baseline that we establish is the 2009, 2010 fiscal year, which would be the baseline of service levels for police and fire in the case of the city of Lompoke.
And there will be an oversight committee appointed?
There will. There will be a, two oversight committees, actually, or one is a national oversight committee and one is a committee that will determine what the budget would be and where the money would go for the prevention intervention programs. But there would be a group of citizens that would be selected and appointed by the board to audit not only the county, but the city's share to make sure that these funds were being spent on what we say they're going to be spent on, and that, and those people would report back annually to the citizens.
Thank you, Sheriff. Any other? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, really like it. Mr. Durham?
Well, I think the only gentleman that wasn't addressed was the young man that spoke about 30% of the incarcerated are illegals. You know, when you have a federal government that sues a state for trying to take care of a problem, there's a problem. And it's not going to happen, that's not going, our answer here. And as the sheriff explained in his presentation two weeks ago and reiterated it this evening, this is by far the best answer we have for our community in Santa Barbara County at this time. So with that said, I do recommend that council adopts Resolution 5677, parentheses 10, in supporting of Measure S.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor, one of the wishes of the council.
I will second that motion.
Thank you. Does anyone want to speak further to the, to the motion? Mr. Lingle?
Yeah, I would. I'm going to be supporting the motion. Up until two weeks ago, I was determined that I was going to be voting against, in my ballot box, against Measure S. I went to two presentations, one in Santa Maria, heard a very good presentation by Andy Caldwell opposing Measure S. And then two weeks ago, I heard a very nice presentation by Sheriff Brown, supporting Measure S. Very good presentations, and there's arguments both ways. It came down to, when I ran for this position two years ago, one of my main campaign issues was public safety. And this really is a public safety issue. It's not that, yes, we're going to be getting some money that we can help support our firefighters and our police officers, but that's not the issue. The issue is, we are potentially going to be putting some very, very dangerous people on the streets of Lompoke right now. For myself, my wife, my children, my grandchildren, you out there, your children, our neighbors, we do not want this to happen. So because I, for, ever since I've been running, I've been a staunch supporter of public safety, this is a very serious public safety issue. I'm disappointed in the county of Santa Barbara for not addressing or not solving this issue years ago. It's been, I believe, at least four, at least four sheriffs that have indicated that this is an issue and it had to be, it should be addressed. It's not until just recently, when Sheriff Brown came to us, came to the county with a possible solution. And because of that, because the county itself has not been able to solve the problem, it's now the burden of us citizens to try to come up with a solution. I don't like taxes. I'm sure you don't like taxes either. But it's something that for your safety, for your children's safety, I believe it's necessary. So I will be supporting the measure.
Thank you. Ms. Rouge.
I, I'll be supporting the resolution, but I do have mixed feelings about it. And I think it's up to you, the voters, to decide. It is a public safety issue. Yes, the county has been putting this off for a long time. This is a way to do it. There's, there's pros and cons. I would urge you all to read your voter handbook and make your own decision on it. But at this time, I will be voting in favor of it.
Ms. Marner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will also supporting Measure S. And I have to say reluctantly, and the reason is, is because I do understand the hard economic times that we are all- is, is because I do understand the hard economic times that we are all in. So, new taxes, even though it is less than what we have right now, nevertheless, it is not the long-term solution for solving our problems, but I will support it because it is a public safety issue. Furthermore, I do understand all the problems that we have with the government being so inefficient in how it runs its monies and its tax money, and I think that is something that we need to solve in the long term. But by turning it down today, just because we think that our government is not doing a good job in dispersing funds, it's just not a good enough reason. And the reason why it's not, is because if somebody tomorrow dies because we let somebody out that should have been in jail, I think that really weighs a lot more, at least in my mind. So, I will be supporting the resolution.
And, bring it back here to, to, to the, to the mayor, the mayor usually speaks last. I will not vote for the motion. I will oppose it, and I'm not going to be voting for the measure on the ballot. And there's two big reasons why I oppose it. I think I and many, many people are disgusted with the concept of earmarks, putting in things to buy votes from other supporting elements. Firefighters, great, they need the support and they need the service, but that's, the tax is double what it takes to build the jail and operate the jail. The tax includes money coming locally for firefighters. I don't know what that, that has to do with locking up criminals. It has to go to mental health, it goes to school for truancy program. Granted, it helps to keep people out of jail, but I, I watched at the federal level, I watched at the state level with, when the legislators put earmarks in the bill in order to curry favor with certain groups of voters. I watched last year when the governor asked for $7 billion for reservoirs and canals, and by the end of the following week, it was $11.7 billion because the legislators stuck things in, like restoring wetlands, like putting in a climate studies institute at the University of California, like other things that, that were not directly related to building the canals and the, and the, and the reservoirs. And I see some of that in here, and I think we have to take a stand and let our legislators know, just ask for the taxes necessary. If it was just the jail, I'd vote for it. I also have some concern about a county-appointed oversight committee coming in and going over our budget and telling us how we should spend the money that comes in. The county doesn't do the same, the, the good job that we do with the budget, so I will be voting against this measure. Let's, okay, let's vote. We have a motion before us. Measure passes four to one.
We, we want to bring it back to the agenda. Item number two, under council request, this is the review of the CalEd report. Arlene Pelster?
Thank you. As council is aware, at the end of July, a CalEd Professional Advisory Service review was performed to develop recommendations for developing local economic vitality. Staff has provided the team's written report and recommendations with this report. The report is divided into two sections of recommendations. The first set are to pursue within 90 days, and the others are to be pursued on a longer term timeframe. We do need council's direction on one of these specific items before we can proceed with all of the recommendations. However, there are a couple of the CalEd team's recommendations we're ready to move forward with. The first is that the team recommended that the city adopt a resolution stating economic development is a top priority. The staff has drafted a resolution for council's consideration tonight, declaring that. It's Resolution Number 5674, it was attached to your packet. The team also recommended that work commence on redesign of the city's website as it applies to economic development to include more dynamic presentation of Lompoc's attributes. The staff has started review on that by reviewing the city's website, as well as looking at other organizations' websites to, you know, gather ideas and possible ways to present this information. So, those are two items where work is underway. The item on which we need council direction involves creation of an economic development director position. This was recommendation number two on page five of the CalEd report. The team recommended that the city create an economic development director position and immediately begin recruitment for an experienced professional to fill that position. The team went on to specify that the director should be in place by the time any strategic planning begins, and that that person should be responsible for managing the strategic process. The staff recognizes there are budgetary conditions that would influence the council's decision as to whether or not this will be implemented, and tonight, we're asking for direct and, direction as to whether or not you want to pursue such a position, because the other CalEd recommendations actually will, will be contingent upon whether or not this person is in place as to how we time them. The recommendations where it says the director should be involved, if you do wish to pursue that position, well, obviously, we would wait until the director is hired and in place. If you wish to pursue another alternative, the staff will come back to you with recommendations tailored to follow your direction. If the council were to direct staff to proceed with creation of this position, it will be referred to the human resources staff, who would prepare a job classification and the compensation range that would then come back to council for consideration. The council could also consider filling this position on a contract basis, or soliciting the services of a professional economic development firm to prepare a strategic plan. So, tonight's staff is recommending that you adopt Resolution Number 5674, parentheses, 10, declaring economic development to be a top priority in our community, to provide direction to the staff regarding creation of an economic development director position, and directing the staff to return with recommendations for further implementation of the CalEd report as you see fit. And this concludes my staff report.
Thank you. Do you have any, as council, have any questions of Ms. Pelster at this time? See? Ms. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question more on the financials before we even get into the discussion of opening a potential economic development directorship position. You know, and, and this is kind of what bothers me in general about hiring consultants, that they give you this really sort of, you know, 30,000 feet up view that says, yeah, you need to hire an economic development director, and I would like to find out where, well, how and with what money. So, my question is, we do have, right now, we have a position open, which is Assistant City Administrator. Have the staff looked at the possibility of, if we're going to fill that position, and if that position is open, there are several options. Either one, we close that position and we open some other one, we join the two positions, and I would like to know whether we have done any analysis on any of these potential things before we even decide to go and open a position in a budget where there is no money.
At this point, and I will refer this to Mrs. Barcelona when I finish commenting, at this point, we have not done an analysis of that. We were hoping tonight to get direction from the council, whether you wanted us to proceed with looking into that. That is an option that exists for the council, is to take a look at the Assistant City Administrator position and revising the job description, and, all right, look at our city administrators, see if you had anything to add to that.
Councilmember Martin, the position of Assistant City Administrator is open, has not been filled, so if it is council's desire to recruit for an economic development professional using this position, that's certainly an alternative.
And, and while I have you there, what is the budgeted amount for the Assistant Administrator position?
The monthly low on that is $6,372, and the high is $8,620.
Is there also any budget or a staff associated with the position?
The budget.
Any other budget?
The budget is in the administration budget.
It's in, within the administration. Thank you.
Mr. Lingle?
It's my understanding that we are not approving a hiring of a position for an economic development director. All we're doing is approving to proceed with opening a position. Is that correct?
Yes. Should the council direct the staff to proceed with creation of the position, the human resources staff will look at creating a job classification and the compensation range, and it will come back to you.
Okay. So, this is, this is where I stand on this. The city has been criticized for years now of not having a plan, an economic development plan. You know, this is what, in my opinion, this is our first step in possibly constructing a economic development plan. We do have some experts that came in and said that this would be a good place to start. We're not a, we're not hiring a person right now, we're not even authorizing the hiring of person. All we're doing is saying, look, this is step one of getting a plan going. Let's open a, at least open a position. We're not telling to hire someone right now, we're not even telling how much we're going to be paying that person. Step one. Then we proceed, well, I have many recommendations where we proceed with step two, but this is really just step one of devising this plan. And a plan that we're going to devise needs to have a leader to carry it out. Now, we could have an ad hoc committee carrying out this plan, we could have the city administrator carrying it out, but I believe what the community has been telling us, what I feel, I believe what people on this chamber, council feel, is that we need an expert to take this city the next step. We have an opportunity right now, as the, as the economy starts turning, okay, and the economy is turning. It turns real slow. We are a aircraft carrier right now, that's going to start turning, and it's going to take a long time for this thing to turn. I want to be on the front of this turn. I don't want to be on the tail end of this aircraft carrier as all the other cities are reaping the benefits of the economy as it turns. I want to be on the front end of this curve. We're not going to be there unless we, yes, we have to have a plan, and we have to have someone to take us forward. This is just the first step. That's my feeling on this.
Ms. Martin?
And this is a question for Ms. Pelster. In discussing with the community issues that have come up time and time again regarding our permitting process, and how frustrating it's been for many small business owners to try to get jump-started in our city, would you think that an economic development director might be able to aid these small business owners, or should we think of some other type of position that may actually help jump-start some of the small business owners that are really struggling in getting through the city? In your opinion, as the community development director, what is the position that you think it will most, and basically, benefit our customers here today, which are small business owners?
Okay. You do bring up a good point. This is one of the points the CalEd team did identify, and just, you know, for members of the public who may not have a chance to read this, one of the long-term recommendations is to begin a thorough review of the permitting process and try to look at ways that we can improve that. I think an economic development professional could definitely assist us with that. However, I think in the long term, if we want to aid small businesses, we need to look at updating our zoning ordinance, and we may also want to look at the concierge-type person that the team recommended to help small businesses through the process. I really think that would be most beneficial to, you know, I think we've had discussions before, not the big company that comes in with a team of professionals, but the small business owner who maybe does this once or twice in his or her career. I think that's how we could have the most benefit to our business owners.
And according to my view, I think you are correct. I think we can actually benefit our community today by not having an economic development director, but perhaps some other position. So, again, I would like to get an idea of really what is it that we need here today, now, as opposed to sort of making a blanket decision that we need some other director where I really cannot justify to open another directorship within this organization. And I have a lot of troubles with really justifying another director in an organization that is already quite crowded with directors. Thank you.
Ms. Rougey?
Well, I tend to agree with council member Lingle. This is, we have been, as he said, criticized for not having a plan. This is step one of the plan, and I do believe we need someone with the expertise that could lead this effort. So, I, I do think we need to look at perhaps the economic development director sitting in and the assistant administrator empty position right now. We do need to have a job description for that person, and I know under your, one of the staff reports, it did say that the human resources staff would come up with that. I think we need to look into this and find out the fiscal impact and set up a position that would, with a job description that would, would talk about, and perhaps, help with the small businesses. So, I tend to go along with council member Lingle on this, create an economic development director position and start working towards that effort. We also need to adopt the resolution that economic development is the top priority. I don't know if we're ready on that motion, and then also that we commence on the redesign of the city website, and I believe it's already going on.
We've started work on that, yes.
Yeah, I thought you had. So, those are just my feelings on-
We did say we would open this up for comment from the public. Is, is anyone who would like to speak to us on the item, please line up.
Mayor, council, Dirk Starbuck, citizen of Lompoc. I just want to take a second and mention that we had this position, and we eliminated it last budget. Now, it reappears. To me, all I see is a growth in government here. Earlier and at every meeting, we give our commissions praise. Our commissions are citizens' representation, and they're good. We have a lot of smart people in this town, and a lot of them that volunteer. I know that we can fix this problem without hiring somebody to do it. I think we can do it ourselves with the proper leadership in our commissions. I think if we established an economic development commission, the first thing it needs to do is to survey the community. This is all in their 90-day focus. We've only taken care of two of seven of these, and hiring somebody shouldn't be up there before the other seven. Surveying a community is simple. We can do that as groups, we can go to churches, we can do it on utility bills, just like CalEd said. We would have to establish our own priorities on economic development, and obviously, establishing small business and permitting them would be one of the first things we'd want to do. That can be done ourselves. Once we've done this, we can go ahead and set goals. Then we'll know what we need to do and what our first hurdles will be. We can heal ourselves, and I think we have the talent in Lompoc to do this. If at this point, we can't fix ourselves, at least then, we would have the groundwork already on what we want. We can already make communication with Vanderburg, the school district, Vanderburg Village, Mission Hills, hospital district, and everybody else that's involved in economic development. We will have data gathered, we will have priorities already established, and we would probably have some pretty good short-term and long-term goals if we did have to hire somebody. I think it's something we should wait on before we go ahead and start putting in human resources and everybody else into this, we wind up hiring somebody for something we can do ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Starbuck.
John Lynn, City of Lompoc. I guess it's the candidate's moment. I agree completely with council member Martin. You know, our, our problem, when the chamber did economic development when I was president in 1989, was building, planning, zoning, and the policies and procedures, and the problem is the same today. And we have the talent within the community. I know someone who has actually done this somewhere and would be willing to help. I'm sure the rest of you do, too. Our very first step needs to be, to resolve that. We had a committee once upon a time called the Overall Economic Development Committee, who rode herd on us at the chamber when we handled that function, and I'm sure those people or similar people are out there today that could draft the framework for our plan. The one thing that I mentioned at a previous meeting was that if we don't give the economic development manager clout, nothing is going to happen. And rather than removing the Assistant City Administrator position, this should be a duty that would be combined with that- that would be combined with that position, so that person would have the clout to get things done. You know, the other day, there was a wine group up here who was trying to get something solved, and they were having difficulty, and a lot of people came together. Councilmember Martner and I talked about it, and she got involved in it, and things were solved. And that's the way things need to be done, and you should ask her about that. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak to the item before us? Please, no one rise, come forward. We'll close the public comment period and bring it back to the council. Is there, what are the wishes of the council at this time? Let me, oh, go ahead.
Okay, I was, I'll just take one of the staff recommendations, that we adopt a resolution number 5674, parentheses 10, outlining economic development is our top priority.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Anyone want to speak to the motion? Let's vote on that part of it.
Mr. Ma, well.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your light.
Sorry.
Got to be quicker with that button.
I guess so. I will approve, of course, the resolution. I do think that it is the number-one priority in this council, and as I hear, it has been for a while. So I will approve the resolution, and then I guess we move on to the next one.
Let's cast our votes. The resolution is approved and submitted. Next item. Website. It was a recommendation, you want to take a discussion on that? What would you like to do on that? Ms. Martner.
I will certainly support that our city administrator, you know, diverts staff to work toward building a better website than we have right now. I've contacted many agencies regarding economic development, and let me tell you, one of the first things that agencies do is to go and visit cities' websites. And these are agencies that may be looking for, that are working with businesses that are looking to relocate. They're called site selector agencies, and they tend to be looking, and the first thing that they do is look at our website, a city's website. Our website is kind of behind the times, it has very little information, it has no testimonials. So I really would encourage our city administrator to work within the staff that we have here in City Hall to improve our website. And if I need to make a motion, I'm ready to make a motion to...
I would imagine there's full consensus on that request.
No need for a motion?
So if you can take that, Ms. Barcelona, and maybe give us a status report in a month or so as to how it's going. The next item, one of the things in the CALED report that I found was that they suggested we do a better job of patting ourselves on the back. They suggested that we do more publicity and try to encourage a more positive attitude in the community. And I, every time I read an article by Joanne Plummer on the Recreation Department, I think, hey, that is absolutely great. She is so positive, she is so promotes the community and promotes her department so well, and comes across so positive. I wish we could do that in other areas. I asked recently the Public Utilities Commission to try to find and spread among themselves, take issues of, that were, things that were doing well in our utilities, and try to write articles and get them published so that the public knows what's going on that's good in the community. And I think, Ms. Barcelona, I'd like you to, I know at one time you asked each department to try to come up with a public, with a positive article every month or something like that. I'd like to see that expanded and something, go ahead, as something that we can do now. The next item, I guess, is hiring of public bodies. Is there anyone else that, I mean, an additional bodies? Is there anyone with something else to address? Mr. Lingle.
I'll make a motion that we direct staff to look at creating the position of economic development director through utilizing existing position of the assistant city administrator.
I'll second that.
Okay. Ms. Martner.
I would like a clarification on the motion. We're going to generate an economic development director instead of, or in addition to, or jointly?
Instead of.
Instead of.
Yes, we're taking, I'm recommending that we utilize the position, the unfilled position of assistant city administrator. That unfilled position, redesign it, reclassify it, whatever staff recommend, how they come up with it. But we would, I'm assuming we'd be closing the position of the assistant city administrator and opening a position of economic development director. No additional positions, just transferring the name of that position.
Ms. Martner. Did you have something else you wanted to say?
Yeah, I guess there is a whole host of questions that get generated, and that is, organizationally, I need to be reminded who is reporting on the charts on this presumed assistant city administrator position. My understanding is that HR and two other departments are below that, so is that mean that your motion implies that those departments are going to go under the economic development director position?
My motion is for staff to come up with recommendations on how to do it. I'm not proposing how we reorganize.
Well, I'll oppose the motion like that right now. We had authorized the city administrator position. In the last year, we have done away with a number of management positions. We've done away with some directors, some managers. We've shifted some of the people that were in those departments to work for the city, assistant city administrator, kind of like a chief of staff in the military with the smaller offices, all reporting to that office. And now, all of a sudden, what do we do with those? Do we leave them out there to float, or we put them under the city administrator? I don't think it can be done. I think that we all, even though there was a freeze on hiring, we all authorized the assistant city administrator position to be filled, and all of a sudden to do away with it and move to an economic development director, when, as it was pointed out, we had an economic development director until last year, and as part of the economy move, we eliminated that position. I think we're going around in circles. So I also want to ask Ms. Barcelona, I believe you advertised for assistant city administrator, and you asked for a person that had economic development experience. Is that correct? Among others?
Mr. Mayor, that was a component, but not an emphasis, and what I would recommend, what I'm hearing, is that the position be assistant city administrator slash economic development director, and recruit for someone that has, you know, the strong skills in economic development, as well as a generalist, able to provide oversight of other departments.
Well, I'm...
Mr. Mayor, I will amend my motion to include Ms. Barcelona's recommendation to assistant city administrator slash economic development director. And a point of clarification, in the last budget cycle, if I recall, we did not eliminate a position of economic development director. We eliminated a position of economic development manager. Is that correct?
Yes.
The responsibilities, the, and everything is different. So it's not that we've eliminated a position and now we're taking and refilling it, shuffling seats. It's a different position, different responsibilities. I'm assuming a different knowledge level, different skill sets, so it's not apples and apples right there. So I will amend my motion to make it, to recommend assistant city administrator slash economic development director.
I'll second the amended motion.
Okay, Ms. Martner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am in a lot more agreement with an amended, with amended motion than the previous motion. You know, to try to go and eliminate one position here and then start another one really just doesn't make any sense without really looking at the organization. As it stands right now, the assistant city administrator has administrative, you know, responsibilities. We need to find an individual that can as well own economic development. And furthermore, at one point in time, we're going to have to add a budget to this individual that can actually, will be able to exercise some economic development strategies and so forth. So I will, I will support the amended motion that we basically give, if you will, a new reclassification to the assistant city administrator. Is that what we're talking about here?
Yes, the current classification would be revised to reflect.
And it will include an economic development component and perhaps have it be the higher priority?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'll turn again. I don't think I can vote for the motion. I think we need an assistant city administrator. I guess if this is just to come back with a job description, position description and classification, and not hire, I have no problem with it. But if it's authorized, hire. Where's our fiscal discipline? We faced a major budget problem, and we said we would put everything on the board, and we'd deal with it at one time. And we said we had to save this much money, and we started drawing lines through items and taking them in priority order in order to make the savings. And we dealt, and we did away with a position. It was a manager and not a director. So now we're creating a director, which is a higher salary, and putting it back up outside the budget cycle, not in the budget cycle. And earlier tonight, we had a request to waive a quarter million dollars' worth of fees for the library, which are general fund fees that help to pay for our general fund, outside the budget cycle, not putting it on. We're going into a budget shortly, and I think we've got to have the fiscal discipline to put the things, all the things we want on the wall over here, see how much money we've got, and start putting check marks next to them when we can prioritize them, instead of taking them one at a time outside of the budget process. So if, let me clarify the motion. If it's to define the job and come back to the council without authorization to go hire, I will support the motion. But if it's any kind of a, let's go recruit or whatever, I can't support it.
Mr. Mayor, that was the motion. But just for, a little comment on what you said, fiscal responsibility outside the budget cycle. We are not creating another position. This position, the assistant city administrator, is a budgeted position. We're not going outside of our agreed-upon budget. The money is budgeted right now. It is, it is not becoming fiscally irresponsible by doing this. We just, five minutes ago, approved a resolution saying that economic development is one of our top priorities. So how can we say...
So is fired, I'm sorry.
So how can we say that economic development is one of our top priorities? I didn't say it was our top priority, one of our, yes, of course, public safety has always been one of our top priorities. But how can we pass a resolution saying that economic development is one of our top priorities, and then say, but we're not going to have a position to take care of it? This is a fiscally responsible move. We have the position. It's been funded. We are now backing up what we said five minutes ago by making economic development one of our top priorities.
Ms. Rouge.
I agree with Councilmember Lingle again. During campaigning, people come up to me, and what people are concerned about is jobs, jobs in Long Poak. And to me, this is one of the ways, or the beginning of a plan, that we can bring more jobs to Long Poak. And it seems a logical sequence of steps to take to do it this way. And if, you know, I think it's the way that we could help our community by doing this. I can't really see, you know, members of the community, we tried the 2020 vision with the chamber, and we've got started on a plan. We took a survey during that time. Mr. Anderson and I worked on that diligently for the last couple of years. But that's a start, that's where we start from. But we need a leader, we need somebody who knows, you know, what they're doing, who has a career in this. And I just, I think this is the way to do it. That's if we're going to do it. I mean, if we're not serious about it, then, you know, let's stop messing around with this.
I'd like to remind the council of events that occurred just two weeks ago, when we had our every-six-month budget review. It was pointed out that we balanced this year's budget, the only way we balanced this year's budget is unbalanced, but we took money out of reserves. Ms. Barcelona told us that she thought she could leave that position of assistant city administrator vacant for another six months to reduce the amount we have to take out of our reserves to balance the budget. Immediately after that, one of the council members up here said, oh, since we've got money and not filling that job, let's put it towards an economic development director. I think that, I think that the whole point was missed, that that job is being held vacant to show some fiscal discipline right now, and to keep from taking more money out of the reserves than we have to. And all of a sudden now, hey, we've got money, so let's spend it. We don't have money. We're still drawing a large amount out of our reserves, and we've still been told that next year, we're going to have to pay, what, a million dollars more than this year, and the year after that, a million more than that, and the year after that, a million more than that to PERS, to pay for retirement costs because the state lost. I'd rather see all of it at budget time, at one time, and see what the fiscal situation is, and then prioritize what we need, instead of going after it now. And just 20, just 45 minutes ago, or whenever it was, we were, we're trying to look for money to build a library, with a request that we waive a quarter of a million dollars of fees that go into the general fund. That would make a deeper hole, and the only way to take care of it is to take that money out of our reserves. Where is the fiscal responsibility? When we have a budget process to deal with these things at one time, we should deal with them all at one time.
Well, Mr. Mayor, you know, times change, and they change in the blink of an eye. As I recall, we sat down where the citizens are right now for several hours, and we were counseled and talked to, and private sessions, and one of the biggest things that came out of that was we needed this position. And like Councilman Lingle stated, we're not saying go out and hire one right now. We're saying, give staff the opportunity to come up with the position, and hopefully, when your fiscal budget comes back around, you'll have it and you'll be able to hire the person. Ideally, and I know the hours, and so do you, the hours that our city administrator puts in, that position is in desperate need of an assistant. But giving credit to our city manager, our city administrator, she admitted that she would be willing to give up that city administrator's position, assistant position, for the economic developer position, or development position. So this tonight is just a proposal for staff to look into it. So to be honest with you, I don't see the heartburn here.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if I understood you correctly, but you mentioned that we had budgeted our fees for Charlotte Web, and that we're going to be proposing to take them away. I don't think that was in the budget. Okay, okay, so let's say with the budget that it stands today, with the budget that it stands today, we have a funded position that... stands today, we have a funded position that apparently the city administrator has said in some place that she's willing to keep it vacant so we will be able to budget again? I mean, this is all news to me. I don't know really what you're talking about. You know, we have a vacant position. If we're not going to fill it, let's eliminate it. Okay? Or, or if we have the intent to fill it, let's fill it. And what we're asking here is to fill it with somebody that knows about economic development and that can take economic development in the city. That's my understanding. I don't, I don't see really where else are we trying to go here? Is that what the motion is?
That is correct.
Okay. I said I could support just writing the job description and come back. Is there any other comment? Okay, let's vote on the item. And that one passes. Is there anything else on the CALAD proposal that anyone would like to bring up at this time? Council requests, if, are there any other council requests to be brought up at this Mr. Lingle?
Not a request, just a comment. Speaking of economic development, I'd like to say thank you to our city administrator, Laura Barcelona, and her staff. If many, some of you will recall at the last meeting, we had a presentation by Mr. Zodovich for his possibility of opening some wine storage on the old Graffco site. He did the presentation and within two weeks, actually within about a week and a half, Ms. Barcelona arranged for the apartment heads to meet with Mr. Zodovich and the developer and they came to an agreement. And it looks like they will be able to phase in some sort of a development on that Graffco site. And this is just a indication of how things can change. The, the city staff worked very hard to make sure that they had all of the requirements. We're not going to cut any corners. We're not going to do, not we, the developer's not going to cut any corners, all ADA, all zoning is all going to be taken care of. But Mr. Zodovich is going to be opening, be able to open up a wine storage center, then phase in as the economy changes to develop the rest of the property. And I just think Ms. Barcelona and the staff did a fantastic job with that and I want to thank them.
Okay, Mrs. Rougey?
So we do some, do some things right. It was, it was a very quick turnaround on that project. I've been asked to announce that tomorrow evening, there is a financial aid workshop which is sponsored by our Lompoc Youth Commission and the Parks and Rec Department. It'll be from six to seven thirty at the Anderson Rec Center. And it's to help people find out how to fill out forms to get financial aid for college or any kind of technical school. And this is, as I say, one thing sponsored by our youth commission. They got together and got some people who will come and give some advice on how to go about this.
Okay, Mrs. Martner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to actually thank Councilmember Lingle for actually setting the record straight regarding the meeting that went on with the developer. It wasn't Councilmember Martner or, or Mr. Lynn that actually made it happen. It was really the staff that worked very diligently to, to make that project move forward. So I think that we, we shouldn't be taking credit for things that we actually didn't, you know, do. So I thank you, Councilmember Lingle. I also would like to make a comment regarding our wonderful Purissima State Park. They are hosting what is called candlelight tours and they're coming this Friday and Saturday. And yes, they are sold out, but I had the privilege to preview these tours that is basically run all by volunteers, by dozens of the state Purissima Park that we have here in Lompoc. And it is actually something that you, you must make reservations to go and see. It is, it is really a jewel that this town has. And like I said, the tickets are already sold out, so you will need to make reservations for next year. And please take a look at the website, you know, the Mission State website and enjoy these really beautiful tours that our dozens offer. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Durham?
Well, and also before our next council meeting, the Lompoc Valley Pal, excuse me, the Lompoc Valley Pal and Parks and Rec are going to have a Pinewood Derby. And I understand our illustrious chief of police is going to be involved in this race. I'm not sure who he's racing against, but this is a lot of fun for the kids and the adults. So it's kind of been brought to my attention that maybe the mayor should pick somebody in staff and throw down the gauntlet. But that's, that was just a comment that was made, Mr. Mayor. So anyway, but on the sixteenth, Saturday the sixteenth, at, and it'll be held at Parks and Rec. And then the events from, I think the registration actually starts at nine, but the event starts at ten. And if you're interested, please contact Parks and Rec and get your cars.
Thank you, Mr. Durham. Three comments tonight. One, our proposed future agenda items lists two joint meetings in November. A joint meeting with the Planning Commission and a joint meeting with the Youth Commission. Those would be immediately after the election. We're apt to have lame ducks on the council. We're apt to have lame ducks on the Planning Commission at that time. And I'd recommend that those meetings be rescheduled after the first of the year. The purpose is to get acquainted and, and set the agenda for the next year on, on advice to the, to the council. And, and I think it'd be better to have them right after the first of the year when, and if there's no objection on the last staff to look at that. Any, any, any comments on, on that, Mr. Durham?
Well, I think Councilman Lingle and I are the two lame ducks. So I, I concur, Mr. Mayor. That's fine.
How am I a lame duck?
You're not a lame duck.
Well, but you're not-
I have two more years, Tony.
That's why I said you're not running.
Oh.
Okay.
He will be here, but.
I thought, I thought there was a recall going on.
Oh, okay.
Hey, we're trying to add some humor. Are you okay?
It just seems to be, it seems to me with a council that, that it'd be more worthwhile to have it with the new council and, and the new Planning Commission.
Mr. Mayor, I support that motion.
Okay. I think staff can take care of that. The, the next item I have, and earlier tonight, and I, I really struggled over whether or not to support Measure S. I indicated that, that I wouldn't support it. But I feel that a resolution by the city urging people to vote on one thing or another is something that is really significant and should only be used when the operations of the city are affected. If we start doing it for worthy causes, there is an initiative on the ballot to support state parks. There is initiative on the ballot to support marijuana. There's an initiative on the ballot to support waiving a number of the environmental regulations. And there's strong feelings on both sides of those. And, and I don't believe that we should be, and I will most, mostly be voting against any formal resolution taking a stand by this, this body, asking the people to vote on an issue that doesn't directly operate, affect the operations of the city. Now, saying that, I do want to point out that we did pass a resolution last January urging people to sign the petitions to put an initiative on the ballot, and it is number, number twenty-two. And what that initiative will do is tell the governor and tell the state legislature through words in the constitution that they cannot take money that's supposed to come to cities to help solve their problems at the state level. This year, there was an attempt to take our transportation money. There was an attempt to take the money that we use for buses. There was an attempt to take our redevelopment money. We've been asked by the library to make some redevelopment money available for them to, to build. I'm not sure it's ever been resolved in the court whether the state has the, the authority to take redevelopment money from the cities, but they tried to. They have a problem up there, but they shouldn't continue to take. The city, this city alone has lost well over $2 million, and I'm just guessing, since 1990, when Governor Pete Wilson started taking money that was earmarked for the cities and saved it at the, at the state level to, to help solve the budget problem up there. So I'll remind you that, that Proposition 22, we do have a resolution approved by the council. It is on the ballot. It will keep, if you pass it, it will keep the state from taking money that's earmarked for the cities. And I'll add my comment that I feel if it doesn't pass, oh, we're fair game. We're telling the legislature that the public agrees that it's okay to take city money. And therefore, they're hurting. Look out. They can take everything that, they can take everything that we've got if, if it fails. So I'll ask you to keep that in mind when you're looking at, when you're looking at your, your ballots. Twenty-two, oh, the only other comment that, that I have is that last year, I did enter a car in the Pinewood Derby to run against the chief. I didn't have time to sit in the garage and shape and make a Pinewood Derby car, so the chief got one for me. And it was the slowest car of the bunch. But we went and guess who won? He did. Well, so, okay, I've had a request again, before we go into oral communications, for a brief break. And let's try to hold it seven minutes. Come back.
Seven minutes.
Now, it's nine twenty-five. We're going to move to the consent calendar, which is normally number one item on the agenda.
Moving right along.
All right, you know, we're going to go through you. That's right. Oral communications at this time, you're free to address the council on any item of city business. You're free to address the council on any of the items on the consent calendar because they'll be taken without public comment. If you want to talk about the continuation of the general plan, I'm going to suggest you hold it because immediately after the consent calendar, we will go into that general plan item. And I think it's better that your comments be heard at the time we're deliberating on that item. So it'd be just a little bit, just, just a little bit longer before we get to that. Are there any that would like to speak at this time on oral communications? Please come forward.
Also, Farm on Bailey Avenue across from the new houses there. I'm here to clear the air about some statements that have been made in this room by both the public and members of this council. Some of these statements that were made were misleading and some were outright lies.
Mr. Silva, if you speak to the item now, when this item comes up, if, if you're speaking, when this item comes up later on, you've already taken your turn to speak.
Yes.
Okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Number one, it was said that the farmland on Bailey was in the egg, some of the farmland on Bailey was in the egg preserve, so the owners do not pay property tax on this land. This is an outright lie. Call your county assessor and get the facts. Just because the land is an egg preserve does not mean you not pay property tax. Number two, a developer who wants to build houses on these properties said the city needs a 200-foot buffer zone because farmers are allowed to let pesticides drift 200 feet off their fields. Another lie. The law says zero drift, off-site. I repeat, no pesticides to drift off-site. Check with Agriculture Commissioner's office. This is the law and this is the facts. It was also said that pesticides have been drifting in town and making people sick. How about some facts? About 1994, 1995, a handful of anti-pesticide activists finally got around to reading Rachel Carson's Silent Spring and decided to make Lompoc their poster city to stop all pesticide use. These were the dark days for all the valley farmers. I was told, I was personally told, I was responsible for killing babies, retarded children, asthma and high cancer rates in Lompoc. My fellow farmers and I took these accusations seriously and wanted to get to the whole truth. If this is indeed happening, we must put a stop to it. We met with every agency in the county, state and federal governments that we could think of to get some facts. When the California Department of Pesticide Regulation and the EPA said air monitoring was the best way to go, we backed them all the way. After about $800,000 was spent on this study, the results were in. This is the report. This is public knowledge. I'm assuming you guys have all read this somewhere down the line, if you've been at town anytime at all. This report, this is the facts. This is not what people have been saying. This is not a councilman's poor memory or twisted truth. This report is public record. It was written by experts, experts with PhDs, experts who have done this before, and experts who deal with science and facts. They tested for 31 pesticides in the city air. Of these 31, they found traces of 27, none above the health screening levels. I repeat, measured levels did not exceed health screening levels and the combined pesticides did not exceed health screening levels. Now, the ironic part of the study was 20 of the 27 pesticides detected were pesticides commonly used by city residents and fumigation companies in the town. Farmers have to report 100% of their pesticide use. City residents do not report any of their use. There is no way to tell where the minute traces of pesticides found were coming from, whether from the farmers who report 100% of their use or the thousands of acres in town that are being sprayed daily and nobody has to report it. All we know for sure is there is no health risk in Lompoc because of pesticide use by anybody. Whatever you decide on the Bailey Avenue accusation, please base your decision on facts, not lies. If you decide houses is the right way to go, I would like to see a buffer zone of two, of not of 200 feet, but of 400 feet to protect my crops and pesticides drifting from town that are being applied by un-
Whoa. Wow. Yeah. Wow. 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 Wow.
Bill again, two times in one night. And I'll make this real fast, but I did pass out a piece of paper there, and it gives the living wage for Lompoc. And I would like to see us just start a conversation about what it really costs and how much we need to do to have a living wage here in Lompoc. It might be that the city in the future may look, if they contract jobs, that the people actually be paid a living wage. But I'd like to, for now, I'd like to just say, let's start having a conversation about what a living wage is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mullin.
Joy Browder, all I want to say is that with regard to the agenda, when Mayor Looney was mayor, if he was aware that there were a lot of people in the audience that came for a certain subject, and it looked like the meeting was going to go very, very long in respect to the senior citizens involved, and people at home watching that are senior citizens, like my 80-year-old friend Betty Bondietti, hope she doesn't mind me mentioning her name, he would move the agenda for that item, I mean, move that item up on the agenda and hear it first. Let's face it, the business of getting the zoning straightened out, that's going to take a lot of time. And some of these people may not be able to come back at a future meeting if Mr. Samensky has to continue it, because it gets to be midnight. I would just respectfully request that the entire council consider moving Bailey Avenue up, like, to the front of the agenda rather, before the zoning, so that the people that are here to speak can speak while it's not too late, and while us seniors are not, while we're still awake. And, and, let's see, because I know this is an issue that's important to the council, and it's extremely important to the farmers and to Mr. Bodger and Mr. Hughesman. So, I would just respectfully request that.
Thank you, Ms. Browder. Is there anyone?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I'm Ed Weinman, and one of the principal farmers in the Bailey corridor. I sent a letter this afternoon explaining a problem that has occurred on the buffer zone, and I'm using that just as an example to show what happens to ag ground when city encroaches. And more problems keep occurring until it's no longer feasible for a farmer to operate. You look all over, every place where the city expands, agriculture disappears. I also would like to point out, and I thought this Bailey, moving the Bailey Avenue, or whatever we do, was our area, and it wasn't to be divided up. That's not what we were talking about in dividing. And I feel that it should be left and decided on as a whole area, not allowing this person to do this, and this person to do that, and so forth. Another point is on the buffer zone. I've been studying it. And if you want to develop the south end, the buffer zone has to be built first for drainage for those subdivisions, is the way I see them. And that would, this is another example, that would, a ditch along there deprived me access to Bailey Avenue. We have harvest trailers and things going in and out, and we turn on Bailey. If you have a ditch, then we have to go make another road around it and have just access, and it's very inconvenient. And I'm definitely against a ditch along Bailey Avenue or development until these items are negotiated and worked out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weinman. I said, "Thank you," Mr. Weinman.
Dave Pierce, I'm a resident of Lompoc. I'd like to speak on the Bailey Avenue issue later on, but since John Silva brought up the issue of pesticide drift, I wanted to speak about that now. And I wonder how many other people are here to oppose the Bailey Avenue expansion, because I think a lot of us are interested in that, and some of us are going to have to leave before the issue comes up. But I wanted to say something about the pesticide issue, because I wanted to amplify on what John said. He showed the results of the pesticide working group that was organized in Lompoc, involving the Environmental Protection Agency and the state government, Department of Pesticide Regulation, and so forth. I sat on that commission and was a signatory to the results. It's true that the pesticide drift study showed that none of the pesticides were discovered at levels above the health risk level determined by the Department of Pesticide Regulation, but those health risk levels need to be questioned. We now know that the levels of pesticide that were measured at every station inside the city of Lompoc are at levels that are dangerous to human health. And for that reason, the pesticide drift issue really says, "Buffer zones are ineffective. We're living in a fog of pesticides." And that's why you can see so many people that you know are discovering cancers in themselves or in their families. It's caused by this very kind of chemical force. Two of the pesticides that are commonly used have now been demonstrated to cause specific blood cancers. This is a serious problem, because now we have a link directly with those pesticides. It's time to reexamine that data that John held up for you, and see whether those pesticide levels constitute health risk based on the new principles that are understood based on these cancer links. So, it's important for city council to consider this. It certainly does complicate the issue of Bailey Avenue, but I would say the Bailey Avenue issues have much more complexity for the future of Lompoc than just health. So, thank you very much.
Joe Tripp, resident of Lompoc. I would ask that you also move the, it's not what I'm here to talk about, but I think you should move it forward, the Bailey, because just, I don't know how you're going to expect all these people to get to it, but anyway. Bear with me, last time I was here, it was not, was not a good experience for me, and it's had an adverse effect on my ability to speak in public. That was some years ago, and I'll give it a shot again. What I'm, a couple of things, hopefully I can get to both of them. Two things that I want to speak about in public comment. On Tuesday, June 8th, 2010, there was a code enforcement workshop with the public and the council members on street sweeping, RV, and such. And I understand if I ask any questions, you'll get to them at a later time. So, if I ask a question, trying not to interrupt, just I understand that you can't answer questions till later, later on tonight, or maybe even tomorrow, or whatever. Anyway, this Tuesday, June 8th, code enforcement meeting with the city council, this workshop, it was not broadcast live on Channel 23, the cable channel, and it, it was held on a Tuesday, so I tried to figure out why it wasn't broadcast live, and it was on a Tuesday, it wasn't on a Saturday. Sometimes with Saturdays, I guess a TAP TV employee doesn't work Saturdays or something like that, I don't know. And then I kind of wonder why it wasn't rebroadcast, or at least if they taped it, played it, broadcasted it another time. Maybe there's reasons for this, I don't know. Then I went to the city website, you know, because I really, I missed this meeting, and I wanted to see, because it had issues that I was interested in, and I couldn't make the meeting. I went to the city website, and I can't click on it, because it's not there to download, to watch for free on the internet, you know? And why isn't it available on the website? At the very least of the three items, the broadcasting live and the rebroadcast were on the internet. And, you know, somebody who, I have internet and I have cable, but, I mean, some people don't, and I figure that at the very least, they could go to the library and watch it, you know, 20 minutes at a time, or reserved time, but anyway. Then I went to the city, and I asked them, "I want to see this, is there videotape available?" And they said, "Well, if you pay $10, you can get a copy of that meeting." And I talked to some other people, and they were under the opinion the meeting wasn't recorded, but after talking to staff, I guess the meeting was recorded. So, my objection was, is that, one, having to pay $10, oh, it's a nominal fee, but it seems like you should be able to participate in local government without having to pay anything, even if it's trying to see something that was never broadcasted or available on the internet. Then I had to go through the extent of filling out a Freedom of Information Act or something like that, in order to pay the $10 to get the DVD, which I think that's extreme, too. You know, why this $10 price? And, you know, the only, hang on here, let me look through my notes. I got a timer, so no need to. So, anyway, I guess if somebody could answer the question, even if it's at the next council meeting or whatever, I'd just like to find out what's up with that. And if the policy is not to rebroadcast or not to have it on the internet, because it's a workshop, or maybe because people had more than five minutes to talk at the workshop, or whatever the issue may be, I think that giving people a reason why this is the situation, and maybe looking at having all these meetings available, anyway. The other item, which I only have 45 seconds, so I'll just go through super fast, is 128 North A Street.
Mr. Tripp, your timing's now up.
Oh, I got 4 minutes 20 seconds. 4 minutes 28.
We've got a, we've got a timer on the machine.
Well, your timer's from 19, the building's 1979, that timer's from the, when it was at the Anderson Parks and Recreation time.
But that's the one we use, Joe.
So, I just lost 30 seconds.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I am Nancy Weinman Hansen, a landowner in the Bailey Avenue specific plan area. The land use element of the general plan adopted by the Lompoc City Council in 1997 states seven goals, of which two I would like to read. Goal five, protect the Lompoc Valley natural resources. Goal seven, preserve and protect the highest quality agricultural soils. This is from the 1997 plan. Bailey Avenue's specific area, plan area, contains prime agricultural Class A soils. Consider the already developed property along Bailey Avenue. Focus on housing price, vacancy factor, undeveloped lots. A question for the council, does the existing housing along Bailey Avenue meet the city's housing goals enough to override the land use elements I have quoted? As you know, the housing market is in a downward spiral, and even the experts do not know how many years it will be to take to recover, and how the housing element in your current general plan will be affected. I urge you to leave the Bailey Avenue area out of your plan, so we can farm.
Thank you, Ms. Weinman. Does anyone else like to speak at this time?
My name is Mia, and I am new to Lompoc, from Erie, Pennsylvania. I got a job here, and I love it. And I noticed that this town is very slow. It's not moving, there's nothing developed, it's not, you know, it's not quaint, it's not pretty. And Pennsylvania, Erie, used to be like that, until they got some new council member in, and they made a lot of changes. And that improved the city, it created jobs, and it attracted new residents. And this is how I see Lompoc, is that we need to have a plan for the future where we can develop it, so we can have newcomers to come in here. I loved, I love this little town. I think it's great, and I would like to live here. I'd like to own my home. Currently, I live in Briar Creek, and I love it, the new apartment is really nice. And Lompoc should go toward that direction, where everything should be built nice and new, because that's how you attract young people. And it's cool, you know? You want to make sure that this town is cool, that people want to live here. So, in all, in all this about this development, I'm for the Bailey Avenue. I, I think Lompoc should develop as much as it can, from the library to installing the Measure S. And Measure S is good. We need public services, and a lot of people don't know, but when the government taxes you, you can take that as a deduction on your Schedule A, on your federal tax return. So, just a little bit taxes, you can contribute to the community. And as a citizen, you have to be strong and pay your taxes. You know, it's just a little bit of taxes, but, you know, if you're strong and willing, and if you have the power, then you pay the taxes. And any of you who don't have a job, who say you don't have a job, HNO Block is always hiring. I mean, I work there part-time, and it pays six months of my rent. They're always collecting new applicant, because the subject is so complex that people get, they don't want to study it. But I'm willing to do it every year, and it pays off. And the more education you have, the more you respect the government and how they install taxes law. I mean, every tax law that got passed, there's a reason for it. It benefit the whole public, not just one sector. You can hear all that in politics, yes and no, but in the end, when it passes, there is a logic to it. So, I think Lompoc has a good future. I mean, it's, the weather's a lot better than Erie. And I don't know, I think this place, you know, can attract young people here. I'm here, you know? So.
I'm Connie Barlow, and I live in the unincorporated area of Lompoc. I was reading the most interesting article, if you subscribe to the Lompoc Record, you saw it too, Parade Magazine. Did you see that, the most recent edition of the Parade Magazine? What are the happiest spots on earth? And what secrets can we glean from them? Uh, good? You saw it, Anne? San Luis Obispo. San Luis Obispo, one hour from us. What do they have that we don't have? Because, yeah, yeah, I know, university, and a government seat. But that aside, that wasn't what the article said they had, and these are things that we could have. And that's why I wanted to take about three or four minutes of your time. Number one, support the arts. And that's why I'm a member of the Board of the Lompoc Pops, because I don't know if you know how special it is to have a Pops orchestra. We're talking about a full orchestra that plays in Lompoc a minimum of four times a year. Awesome. We've got it. Boost, this is one of the things that they did. They boost biking and walking trails, and they even make public transportation free into the city if you work in the city. That's awesome. They have tried hard to make their city attractive. Ah, ah, that's why I'm here. San Luis has an aggressive green belt plan, and an ordinance that limits housing growth. They want to grow from within. They try to make what they already have beautiful. They have a land conservatory and a city manager that raises funds to purchase green spaces that come up for sale. And as a result, since 1994, the city has acquired 3,000 acre- And as a result, since 1994, the city has acquired 3,000 acres of open space, and suburban sprawl has been minimized. I'm wondering why we're not doing that. I'm wondering why people don't say, have you seen Lompoc? It's absolutely gorgeous. We don't say that about Lompoc. Because you go down H Street and you see buildings that are in disrepair, you see stores that are closed. I'm a Realtor, I know. And I know how many houses are up for sale right now, and I know how many houses people want to put up for sale, but they're not and they're waiting. What I'm suggesting here is that our, and by the way, Mike, you and I agree on something because, because he and I battle all the time. Because if we fund that city administrator assistant position, and I know you need it, but we're talking $76,000 a year minimum, man, I'd love to make that without having to worry about every time I sell a house, I got a lousy $3,000 or $4,000 commission. We're talking, in 13 years, that person's made a million bucks. Now, if you funded on the top side, that's $96,000 a year, in 11 years, they've made a million bucks. We could, with a million bucks, buy up land that's for sale and create parks and open spaces, and make Lompoc, in the next Parade Magazine, the best place to live.
Thank you, Ms. Barlow. Anybody else at this time? Mr. Kime.
Evening, Mayor, City Council members. I'm opposed to the Bailey Avenue extension. But I like what the guy said earlier about the pesticide issue, and I think that's old news. I think we need to focus on what's happening right now. I don't want to see the city back in the idea that no one should stop anyone from selling their land. I mean, it's a great ploy, I know the annexation will affect that, and the city's going to buy that land from them, or will annex their property. So my question to City Council is, how long is it going to cost us? If this idea goes through, however you believe your idea to be, whatever you believe in, how is it, what's it going to cost us? But I feel that your personal beliefs about the expansion should be left out of it. How is it really going to affect the city? So, also, I'd like to know how many people here oppose the expansion in this room?
Harry, let's.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else like to speak this time? See, when no one rise, move forward, we'll close the oral communications period and move to the consent calendar. We have three items on the consent calendar, very routine, approval of minutes, approval of the expenditures and payroll, and termination of a NCPA natural gas procurement program, third-phase agreement that's over 20 years old and has been overcome by some events. And it concerns buying natural gas for our power plant in Northern California. What are the wishes of the council on that item?
I move that we accept the consent calendar.
Motion to approve the consent?
I'll second it.
Motion is second. No other comments? Bob?
Oh.
Oh, okay, then let's vote. We got through consent calendar. Public hearing, the general plan update, continued from the City Council meeting of September 21st. One of the reasons that I wanted to take the maps first was that we have already closed a public hearing for that portion of it. But we talked earlier today, Mr. Panoni, can we move the Bailey forward if?
Yes, you can.
Want to?
Yes, you can.
Okay. We'll go ahead, we'll move that one, move that one forward, and I'll ask, Mr. Durham, you were the one that asked this reconsidered, would you start the discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. After the decision was made on the initial EIR on the urban limit line, retaining the urban limit line, the reason I voted the way I did, and, you know, it kind of disappoints me, because most of you out there know me, and when you have a newspaper that says that I'm in somebody's back pocket, or, you know, I'm bought off, or rumors are flying, obviously you don't know me. You know, I am probably the most black and white person you'll ever meet. After the decision was made, my concern was, we had a statement that was made just prior to the voting that night. And the statement was that, well, we have three of the four property owners that are here, and they want to retain the urban limit line. Well, my concern was Mr. Wyman. And as you heard both him and his wife speak tonight, my concerns weren't off-fetched. I wanted to make sure that Mr. Wyman, if he wanted to plant a tomato plant in the middle of his property, he'd be able to do so and not be interfered with whatsoever. So I came into city staff, sat down with the staff, asked them how we can work something out that will protect the Wyman property from being involved in any of this urban limit line. After a discussion, we came up with, there is going, you know, what I'm going to suggest is that on the north side of Mr. Wyman's property, that there'd be a 200-foot buffer, and it has nothing to do with pesticides, folks. This is just to protect Mr. Wyman's property. On the south side of Mr. Wyman's property will be another 200-foot buffer. The street that comes in off of Central called Western Avenue, it will end up being a cul-de-sac on the north side of the buffer zone. So if you're driving in onto the property, you'll turn around and go back out the way you came in. And that same theory will happen on the south side. Mr. Wyman's property, there is no drainage ditched anywhere, there's no roads, so your concerns as far as those issues, you can rest assured that's not going to happen. Mr. Wyman will be allowed to continue as he has done in the past, and that is go from Bailey to V Street and farm his property. However, the other three property owners, they have requested that they be brought into and retained into the limit line, the urban limit line. So, after, like I said, after speaking with staff, that's my proposal tonight, and by the way, you know, the comment was made by Ms. Wyman, that the 1997 report indicated that natural resources should be preserved as well as prime ag land. Well, guess what? It was also said in 1978. So this isn't anything new. My concern is protecting a man that wants to farm his property, and to allow another man that wants to do whatever to what he owns, the opportunity to do so. So that's my change of heart on the vote. So what I would like, we need to open it up to public comment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is there any other comments from the council at this time?
Do you, excuse me, I was having a hard time following what you were saying about the south pieces of property, and do you have a, is there a picture of that someplace of what you're saying? I mean, I've got, I know what the property looks like in my mind's eye, but.
I can loan you this.
There we go.
And I can talk you through that.
I'm a visual learner, so.
The property, as you look at it, let me get to my copy here that I've got hiding here somewhere. Here it is. You'll see that Mr. Wyman's property is adjacent to the Mitchell property and also, I believe, the Hughesman property. The railroad track, and then just north of, I guess it's Pine. But if you look at that map, the north side of the property would have a buffer, as well as the south side, that adjoins the other two pieces of property to the Wyman's property. And again, this has nothing to do with pesticides, this has nothing to do with, other than the fact that we're going to give Mr. Wyman his property to be able to farm.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Ms. Martin.
Yeah, so I guess we have a new proposal here on the table regarding some buffer zones and some Mr. Wyman's property.
Okay, we haven't, we don't have a motion on the floor. We've reconsidered the entire issue that was presented to us, can be shaped whatever way we want when we come to a motion.
Okay, so I would like to ask the staff about, I guess, where the conversations regarding a buffer zone in north and south, and.
Currently, the general plan calls for a buffer zone of a minimum of 200 feet to separate properties that are actively farmed or properties that are developed for urban uses. So that's the information that was provided.
There were no specifics as to where?
We had provided a property owner's map indicating which property owners which owned which parcels in the Bailey Avenue area.
Right, and that is what we all have.
Yes, that was provided to all of council.
Expansion area A, and there is a buffer zone. I guess what I'm confused is that Councilmember Durham is asking about a buffer zone in some other new areas, and I guess my question to staff is, if the council were to consider that, is that going to trigger a new EIR, some new studies? And what happens if the council proposes some new buffer zone to accommodate presumably some protection of agricultural farming in one of these properties? If I read correctly what's kind of happening here?
Well, the general plan EIR evaluates the change in land use on those parcels in a very general sense. So details such as buffer zones or the arrangement of those land uses within that area is something that would be considered as part of the required future specific plan, and the EIR that's separate from this EIR that would accompany that process. Where we would have issues with the EIR is if there were changes to the circulation pattern or other attributes that were studied already in the EIR for the former concept of the Bailey area. So I would have a concern about the change in circulation potentially from the two new cul-de-sacs, if that changed circulation patterns, that's something that we haven't studied yet in the EIR.
And regarding the land use, it stays the same as the original proposal? Any land use changes?
Right, I mean, we have certain assumptions about what the ultimate build-out of that area would be, but that, those densities could be transferred to the remaining portions potentially. So, you know, I think basically what we've evaluated already in the EIR covers the possibility of that land use pattern. So I don't consider that to be necessarily a change that wasn't covered in the original EIR. But when we get into circulation issues and other things of that nature, that's something that I think would require additional study.
I have a question. Isn't the issue still to keep the urban limit line where it is, or to change it and put it, say, farther east next to this, the city boundary line?
Those are the options that are currently on the table. However, if the council wants to specify other characteristics about that area that haven't been studied, and we need to make a determination as to whether that's been covered or not. So the decisions before you are, pull the urban limit line back, retain the existing zoning from the 1997 general plan throughout the area, or change the land use as has been proposed and was evaluated in the EIR.
Mr. Mayor, may I just add some additional comments, perhaps some clarification? Think of it this way, the EIR that was prepared looked at keeping the limit line where it originally was, so it considered all of the impacts that would result if the limit line stayed where it was. It also considered an alternative that moved the limit line where your last motion decided to move it. So if the limit line is going to be somewhere in between those two, I would say it's probably pretty likely, although you can't really know for sure, but it's probably pretty likely that all the impacts would have been already looked at because you were looking at the limit line already all the way to the west. So if it's less than all the way to the west, which is what I'm hearing from this suggestion, your EIR probably is going to satisfy the analysis that's needed.
Thank you. Ms. Martin.
Well, I quite don't see it that way. I mean, the EIR was looked at with changing, I mean, what we basically approved of in the previous meeting, and there were some studies that were made. And now you're saying that, oh, well, if we put it in between, I'm sure the EIR will fit some combination thereof. I mean, you know, 2 plus 2 is not necessarily equal 4 in this situation. I mean, it's not that linear, it can have very major consequences if you're talking about that you might decide to do something in between, and it will have an impact. Or if it doesn't, at least we need to study it and look at it. But just to assume that it's covered, to me, it just seems very irrational.
If I may, to the chair, what an EIR typically will analyze is a worst-case scenario, and it will also analyze some alternatives which are less than the worst-case scenario. What I'm saying is, what I'm hearing being suggested is somewhere in between the less-than-worst-case scenario and the worst-case scenario. And if that's true, if the facts bear that out, then the EIR will be fine.
Thank you. At this time, let me, Mr. Legal, and then we'll go to public comment.
I guess the question is, well, there's many questions, but with the, what you just indicated is, we really don't know if it's going to affect the EIR or not. It could and could not. So are we, if we accept this proposal, we could not vote on the EIR today?
What I'm trying to do is provide for the record information that if you decide to make all of your decisions tonight, there's going to be sufficient information in the record to support that decision. That's not to say that if you want to have more information because you feel, or a majority of you feel that there needs to be some additional information, you can certainly ask for that information.
All right, we will now go to public comment. I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to say, the slide that's, we have up here is, if you look at the blue, because that's what we're talking about. We're talking about the, moving the urban limit line to the city limit. We're retaining the urban limit line. And per staff, I'm assured that the Wyman property will not be affected in any way by doing so.
So that would, so, yes.
Yes, that's what I was advised.
I would like, I would like the staff to state that Mr. Wyman's property is not being affected in any way.
If alternative number one was the planning commission recommendation, that recommendation moved the urban limit line, which is currently at Bailey Avenue, east to the city limit line, which excluded the Bailey Avenue from the future of the general plan. So that excluded that expansion area. If the council would wish to retain the existing urban limit line along Bailey Avenue, that would be either the EIR project description, which is the first description, or it would be alternative two, which retains the low and the very low density, which are currently identified on our existing general plan map. If the urban limit line is retained, that is providing the property owners with information that the city would. that the city would consider a request for development or annexation. That would be based on a specific plan that would come forward for that corridor, as is required in the existing general plan. If Mr. Wyman wanted to continue farming on his property, that would certainly be his option. He would not be forced to have his property developed. The property owners who wished to develop their property would be the ones who would be bringing the plan forward.
So I, can we open this then? So I think that, yeah, let's just open it for public comment this time.
Mayor, City Council, Joyce Howerton, Lompoc. I have in my hand some petitions that I will present to you. We took a couple of days and collected these. We received over 200 signatures on these petitions of people that oppose the Bailey Avenue expansion. I received a bunch more tonight, but I didn't have an opportunity to make copies for you, so I won't turn those in. Look at these petitions. They're signed by business people, they're signed by homemakers, they're signed by candidates, they're signed by liberals, they're signed by conservatives. They're signed, and they are the face of this community. I've heard a number of times you talk about private property rights and the rights of people. Well, what about Mr. Wyman's private property rights? Don't they count? He has said, and with all due respect, Councilman Durham, Mr. Wyman has said a number of times that if this goes forward, he will not be able to farm. And I trust that he knows better than anyone else, whether he can or not, and he's saying he can't. And he gives a huge revenue. I mean, he makes a lot of money out there, and we need to look at that. But we're not taking anybody's private property rights away from them. This is in the county. Why aren't they going to the county? Nobody said they couldn't go to the county. That's where they belong, instead of trying to come in here and change us. When I was taking these around, it was interesting, the comments that people made, like, why change something like this? This is going to make this city horrible. They'll destroy us. Bell, California, has nothing on us. Infill, why aren't we looking at infill? Has this council never heard of smart growth? Those are the kinds of comments that were made by ordinary people that live in our community. And the last thing I'd like to say, and this is for you, Mayor, that when Charlotte's Web was being discussed tonight, Charlotte's Web is one of the most wonderful projects the city will ever see, and I encourage all of you to support it with your money and your time. But you said, shouldn't, this is so close to the election, shouldn't we put this off until the new council comes? And I would say to you, this Bailey Avenue specific plan will change the face of this community in your lifetime, in my lifetime, and probably in the lifetime of everyone in this room. And I would say, I think you have responsibility to put this off and have the new council make decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Howerton.
I'm Charles Schirmerhorn. You've lived in Lompoc for over 20 years. I don't come to these meetings very often. The times that I've been here, I've seen disappointment. But this issue moved me because, when I worked years ago, I worked in Pasadena. I attended a meeting at which the mayor of Pasadena spoke about the new development occurring in the city. Old neighborhoods of small, single-family homes were being dismantled, and multi-unit apartment buildings put up in their place. He said then that the retirement benefits of the police and the fire department were bankrupting the city, and that this plan to add to tax base was the only alternative. I asked him how he expected the increased taxes to keep up with the increased infrastructure, which the new units would require that applies to this project. He admitted that they wouldn't, but that was a future administration's problem, not his. Lompoc's drive to develop Bailey Avenue acreage is headed in the same direction. More houses, more taxes, but also more infrastructure requiring yet more financing. We have seen earlier projects, including the much-foughted PXP development on Harris Grade Roadstop, despite repeated efforts by the company to get it approved, and the Never Say Die Bridge from 246 across the river to Central, put to rest for now. But I can't understand what it is about the word "no" that this council and the Planning Commission don't understand. In some cultures where poverty is great, families have been known to sell one or more of their children to reduce the expense of survival. Lompoc, it seems, has to fight to prevent its own children, the precious ag-land acreage to the west, from being open to developers who interest in the city, ends with the completion of yet another tract of houses, all in the interest of a temporarily richer tax base. But once it's gone, it can never be regained. I urge a no vote on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schirmerhorn. Next.
Good evening. Carol Benham, Lompoc resident. Contrary to what some of you may have read in the Lompoc record today, I do live in Lompoc. My family moved here in 1958, and I won't tell you how old I was. I have a question of fact that I'd like to raise, and perhaps the staff or the city attorney could respond. The council received three letters from DS Ventures of Los Angeles, each letter saying something very similar, and I'll quote from one. "It was our understanding that the only requirement for development was an annexation." The city assured us, excuse me, "The only thing required to develop the property was to annex." Each letter writer specifically said, in essence, that this assurance was given. And my question is, to the city attorney or staff, would it have required a vote of the council in the past to have given such an assurance? If so, did a vote occur, and when? And if not, then if there was no vote, then it would appear that there's an effort here to attempt to, to attempt to force this council to approve something that a past council did not, in fact, approve. Thank you.
Charles Blair, again, a resident of this area since 1994, and grew, and having grown up in Paso Robles, honorable mayor and honorable council. Acres of houses on farmlands, it's the saddest thing I have ever seen. We better start making, thinking about making a stand, or we'll all end up on Solient Green. Remember Solient Green? This chorus from Mary McCaslin's Acres of Houses has much to say about the proposal to reconsider the Bailey Avenue extension. In the song, she describes returning to the place where she grew up, and is deeply saddened by seeing around her houses as far as her eye could see, and meadows turned into malls. I'm glad to share this, I just happen to have a CD with it, be glad to share this with anybody interested in hearing it. In a recent soil course, soil science course I took at Cal Poly, the professor stated that since the end of World War II, the acreage of California's prime agricultural land has been paved over roughly the equivalent of the state of Kansas, I believe. Referring to Mr., yes?
You spoke on this subject and gave us those same figures earlier, and I had indicated at that time that if you spoke at that time, you wouldn't be allowed to speak now.
Oh, okay.
You have your choice. So I'm going to ask you to yield the podium to the next speaker, please.
Okay, okay, I, okay, I will, I did not speak to this, not this evening.
Who's?
I did not speak to this, issue this evening.
No, Ms. Mayor, we talked about the, because we have the letter that Mr. Blair sent to council.
Right.
And I'm sure that's what.
Correct.
That's what you're referring.
That's, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, yeah, I was not one of the previous speakers.
Okay.
I'm referring to Mr. Wyman's article in the 2nd of October. He describes, Mr. Wyman, the importance of the unique soil properties of Bailey Avenue corridor containing six of the 10, six of 10 of Santa Barbara County's most valuable crops. Okay, I'll kind of skip on a little bit. Agriculture has been the base of a stable industry since the Lompoc Valley was settled. Unlike developed property, value of this kind of farmland has continued to rise because there's so little of it left. Our coastal valleys should be kept in production, not only for the benefit of the, present benefits, so that future residents, generations can thrive. This is land we can ill afford to lose more of. With vacant properties in Lompoc and depressed housing market, I feel that adding more acres of houses on highly productive farmlands is not in the Lompoc Valley's best interest. I strongly urge the council to stay with the original wise decision not to annex Bailey Avenue extension. I thank you.
Hi, my name is Jessie Vineyard, and I have lived in Lompoc for 39 years, and I am totally against the development of Bailey Avenue. Everyone I have talked to is totally against this, and I have not met one person yet who is for this project, unless it's a property owner or someone who does not, who has not lived in Lompoc for a very long time. And when I tell the people that the city wants to build 2,000 to 2,700 new houses, they can't believe it. They did not know that it was on this large of a scale. I have done some research, and I don't know if the council has read the, any of the reports by the consultants, Ringcon consultants. It is 218 pages. It is the Bailey Avenue Corridor Specific Plan Constraints Analysis. And there is so much in here that is mostly a con, you know, saying that regardless of this buffer, land use conflicts remains a site constraint. Almost everything to air quality, to traffic, this is all on the internet. The Pacific, traffic is saying that the vehicle trip ozone precursor emissions are a site constraint, and if it's not a site constraint, it states that this is not a site constraint. There are so many pages, I can't believe that the city would even be looking at this property to develop it, when there are so many other vacant properties. Granted that you can't build 2,000 homes in some of the vacant lots, and I think that that is all why some of the people are in favor of this, is the money that it's going to generate. I don't think the money that it's going to generate is worth the loss of the land, which is prime ag land. Also in this report, it states so many things, like the railroad hazard, railroad hazards area is a site constraint, hazardous materials are a site constraint. In this 218 page, or whatever it was, it's saying there still has to be more studies done on some of the soils because it may be contaminated. So there's so much more that has to be done to deem it safe. I have also contacted one of the property owners here in town who has a vacant lot, the one that sits right in front of, next to the bowling alley, Peter Kargasaki, and I asked him if the city of Lompoc has ever contacted him to build on the property, and he says, no, never. That's just one of the empty lots that are in town, that's possibility to build on. And I don't know how many, I think there's alternatives to build and develop, not on prime ag land that's going to go all the way from Central to Magalito School. That is just, I can't even believe that the city would consider this. And another thing about the owners' rights, my family recently tried to annex South G Street, which is the hillside, into, because it was county property, tried to annex it. They are, they are the landowners, and the city shot them down because they were listening to the voice of the people. They did not want this. They only wanted to build 10 ranchettes, and the city was against this. So when I, when I hear about property owners' rights, my family's rights were not, were not even considered. So the majority of the people are against this project, and the council's supposed to be the voice of the people. So put aside your personal or financial reasoning and vote against this project. The revenue can be acquired elsewhere, and tax, tax dollar signs should be, should not be the determining factor on such priceless, valuable, and scarce land.
Thank you. May I ask you to wrap up?
Okay. I just, one more thing. I printed out the current residential projects, and altogether, there is 1,165 total of units that have been built or are in the process of being built, and that is not including...
I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up.
Okay, that's not including the 2,000 homes that they want to build. Thank you.
Next, please. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, honored council members, my name is Fred Terranova. I moved to this area in 2005 and purchased a home recently in the Crown Point area. When I heard about this annexation, it just tipped me over the scales. I looked at everything that's happened to Lompoc in the last couple of years, the demolishing of the bowling alley for a so-called senior assisted living area. It's not there. I look at all the vacant lots that are in the area, next to the Vons on Ocean Avenue, perfect place to have some development, nothing's there. You guys want to do something to be like San Luis Obispo, then build up the inner city, not build outside. Outside is used for the last thing that we have, and that is the natural environment. My wife and I used to live in Canada, we left a ranch up there where we enjoyed the beautiful scenery, and we moved down here. And if you guys continue to think in this vein of just gobbling up this stuff of 2,000 and something homes, like this lady said, hell, you can't even fill Briar Creek and the place on Laurel, that fiasco with three houses in it, come on, 2,000 houses, and what industry are you going to fill these people up with in these houses? You don't have any industry here except for farming. That's it. Anyway, thank you very much, and I wish you guys all good luck in your elections.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. I represent a very small group here. I am for the development. I'm a military spouse, I'm new to Lompoc. My husband's been in the Air Force for 18 years, and this is my first-ever experience having to live out in the community. We've been in base housing for the last 18 years. When we got to Lompoc, we had not heard any favorable things from anybody, prior servicemen here. Everybody basically told us, you don't want to go there. Unfortunately, we didn't have a choice, so we came. When we got here, there was no housing available on base, so we began to look out in the community, and much to our chagrin, realized that there was, although there's an abundance of homes available, there weren't an abundance of homes available in areas where we would feel comfortable living as a military spouse with husbands who deploy and having to be on our own with small children. Another factor was the school districts, which I've not heard anybody bring up. We were looking for specific school districts. We wanted our children to have a continuous education in the same manner that they've had at their previous bases, so that limited our area. And we really could not find anything, to be quite honest. I know there's many homes up for sale, but as military... I know there's many homes up for sale, but as military members, we never know how long we're going to be anywhere, even if it's in writing. And we're not interested in long-term development. We're not interested in buying a house and putting 10 years' worth of work in it to turn around and have to leave it. There's no rental properties in this area, in, in the area under consideration for people like myself who are looking for a nice, safe, comfortable area to live in, in the school districts and the schools that we desire. So that's why I came to speak tonight. I know there's, we're just a very small population, but we are a very active part in this community. And more and more, with the privatization of the on-base housing, more of us are living out in the community, and this is definitely a need that we see. I personally know a multitude of families who are living in Santa Maria and making the commute simply because they wanted new construction. They wanted homes that they could live in, that are under warranty, that won't require a lot of maintenance because their spouses are gone and it's just us. So I would hope that you would take just a small bit of this into consideration when making your decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, there was a petition that was passed out. Could, could the council see it? It hasn't been distributed to the diocese here. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Cindy Anne Zora. I'm 20 years old, and I have lived in Vandenberg Village for 10 years now. I recently moved into the new Seabreeze apartment homes because it reminded me of Vandenberg Village. It is a quiet, clean, safe area in which I could raise my newborn daughter. My fiance, David O'Dwyer Jr., and I are both hard-working professionals just starting our family. We see Seabreeze as a place where we can safely enjoy a walk to the park or jog around the trails in the Briar Creek area. We love living next to the farmlands because we enjoy, we get to enjoy the beautiful flowers outside of our front door. The proximity to Walmart and the grocery stores is perfect for us. Once my fiance and I have saved up enough, we are planning on buying a house, preferably a new house, in the same area we are living in now. We love where we live and would love nothing more than to continue our lives in the same area because it is safe and it is clean, and there's nothing that's disturbing us there. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is John Armstrong, also a new resident of the Seabreeze Apartments, also a new resident of Lompoke. I was born and raised in Denver, and I just got married to my wife, who is a longtime Lompoke resident. And we've been engaged, we were engaged for a long time, and we spent seven, eight months looking at apartments, houses, everything in Lompoke, trying to find a safe, well-built, clean, just reliable place where we could live. And for the longest time, we found nothing that we were happy with. We actually got to the point of looking at Santa Maria before we found Seabreeze. And when we went to the apartment, we just saw, you know, we loved the, you know, great views, obviously, since it has, you know, it's right next to the farmland, obviously. And it, most importantly, though, it just felt safe, and it felt like a really great community for new families, for new couples. When we have a kid, hopefully a year or two down the road, it seems like a perfect area to, to raise our family. And I think a lot of other people will see it that way because it's, you know, you could use the word fresh, but mostly it's just, it just feels clean and it feels safe, and I'm using the same words over and over again, but it's just a very comfortable place to live, and I couldn't find that elsewhere throughout the city. So that's why I am in support of this and in support of the community which has been built there and which my wife and I have been living a great life so far. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, excuse me, hello, my name is Isaac Gray. I'm a local painting contractor. I'm pro-expansion. Come, I'm new to the areas while I moved here about three years ago. And one of the things when my family was looking for someplace to live is not buying a house right away, but, you know, looking for an apartment or somewhere that was safe. And very hard to find anything in Lompoke that was new, that was clean or well-managed. And it's just like, you know, finding a needle in a haystack. When you drive around Lompoke, there's very few streets that you can even drive along that you see like, oh, this is a pleasant neighborhood. I mean, you have houses that are in great repair because, you know, there's fine citizens in here, like here, that'll take care of their house, and the next door, you got 10 junky cars sitting in the front lot. You know, it's, although, you know, there's pros and cons to everything, bringing people to the area, having something new and fresh for them to look at, eye candy, as it may be, is, you know, something that will help expand the city, help bring people, help bring stuff back, you know. There's not a bowling alley anymore, so it's, you know, just less and less things for people to do, especially being a younger person in the area. You know, obviously with new construction, new homes, newer businesses are going to want to come in as well and generate revenues for the cities. And that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cassie Clark, and I am the community director of the new Seabreeze Apartments on Briar Creek, as well as a wife and a mother of two. When we first opened Seabreeze in November of '09, it was immediately obvious that Lompoke had been starving for some new quality living in this community. Before we even opened, I had a 300-person waiting list of people wanting to come and see and move into our place. This still holds true today. I have a 0% vacancy factor, and I also have a waiting list of people waiting for future vacancies. Tenants that I have are all quality, hard-working professionals, some military, some civilian, but all are good citizens. These are people with families just starting to build their families using Seabreeze as a starting place to build their lives. I am sure that you all remember Joe the Plumber from the last presidential elections. I'm going to use Jeff the Firefighter. Jeff was supposed to come tonight but couldn't make it due to work constraints. Jeff the Firefighter is an honest, hard-working man just starting to build his family. He enjoy, he is engaged to be married in the next four months and has a six-month-old daughter. And just like the majority of my tenants, he is using Seabreeze as a place to live with his family until they save up for a new house. He chose Seabreeze because of the safe neighborhood, the opportunity to move into a brand-new apartment, and the beauty and tranquility of living next to the farmlands. He would love to see more new single-family homes built in the area, and having moved into a brand-new apartment, he would love nothing more than to move into a brand-new home in the same safe, beautiful area that he and his family fell in love with. On a personal level, as a wife and mother, living at Seabreeze has made both me and my family fall in love with Lompoke. More specifically, the area that we live in. Seabreeze is located in the best area possible, in my opinion. It is quiet, safe, beautiful, and the people are all very nice. I had to move out here from my job from LA, leaving behind my family. As you can imagine, the grandparents were quite upset. After numerous visits, my parents are very interested in moving out here. However, they cannot find any new quality housing in the area close enough to us. They don't want to buy an old house that requires a lot of attention. They would like a new home because they are aging, that has a warranty and little to no maintenance required. I know many other families in my complex that are in the same situation, wanting their families to follow them to move out here to this beautiful city. So as you can see, there is a great need for more new, single-family homes in this area. I would also like to add that I had about five other people that were here to speak on pro-expansion, and they had to leave due to the time constraints. Thank you.
My name is Brad Wimmer, and I'd like to voice my full support of the Bailey annexation and the Bailey development and to urge council in voting in favor of those two items. Sitting here, and I'll try to make this very brief, sitting here in the audience, it, you, what this is about is a couple of things. Number one, property rights. The city is not going after the parcels and saying, we're taking your farmland and changing it. The property owners have done this. They have followed the proper procedures, working with city, and proper submittals. Somebody made the comment that you should ignore property rights here because their family went through a similar issue with property rights. Well, that doesn't make your situation right, and you shouldn't apply that here. Property rights still need to stand up. Council spent a great deal of time talking about economic development. There was probably a 15-minute conversation about hiring, creating a job for economic development, a manager, a director, whatever. Allowing the development of Bailey provides economic development. What does it do? It provides jobs. How much does it cost the city? Zero. In fact, the city benefits through the fees that are caught, that are generated through the development. So in the end, this is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Rosemary Holmes, long-term resident of Lompoke, and, gosh, I don't know where to start. I live in unclean, unsafe, dirty old Lompoke, I guess. This is a new-issue class warfare. I have to say that as much as I respect property rights and developers' rights, that they should always be held to the constraints of the community interest. And to me, community interests are being well-served by not extending the Bailey corridor. And I just don't see taking away prime ag land. It's just too stupid, and we know better. We're wiser than that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holmes.
Mayor Samensky, I'm Jack Bodger. Mayor Samensky and city council members. The city has demonstrated its intent to develop the Bailey Corridor for over 30 years. There's been a sewer assessment of the Bailey Corridor landowners, the barricaded streets along Z Street, and the lack of an agricultural buffer between the intense farming to the west of Z and the residential areas to the east. The Bailey Corridor development will solve an incompatible use that currently exists between the farming community and the residential community along Z Street. This will provide a, an agricultural buffer that is recommended by the state of California, and also the, the San Luis Obispo County Ag Commission has a whole series of recommended buffer widths according to the intensity of the farming activity. This is something that's not a part of Santa Barbara at the moment, the Santa Barbara agricultural consideration, but I think it should be adopted. An agricultural buffer is needed between the farming and the residential use. This is needed for the health of the citizens of Lompoke and has never been provided for because the city intended to expand the city limits to Bailey Avenue and then no further. In 2008, LAFCO recommended that the Bailey Avenue plan be adopted because the proposal, I quote, "has a significant number of housing units to help meet the demands of residential growth in an efficient pattern and maintain a realistic buffer with agricultural lands." The 270 acres in the Bailey Corridor is owned by five parties. My family, the Bodger family, owns 100 acres. The Huesmans own 60 acres. Mr. Weineman with 52 acres. Mr. Mitchell with 20 acres. And DS Ventures has 40 acres. I think that the proposal that was floated tonight is a reasonable one where the landowners who wish to develop are allowed to, and the landowners who wish to continue farming are allowed to. This is a sensible compromise. We are willing to provide the agricultural buffer on either side of Mr. Weineman's property as a feature of the development process. Part of the EIR study on the Bailey Corridor project is the housing element, which states that there is enough land within the city limits to address the state's mandatory housing needs assessment. This assessment is designed primarily to serve the needs of low-income and affordable housing. The housing element, like the EIR, does not address the economic or community benefits of a residential development project aimed at middle-income buyers. There is an estimated 78 million baby boomers who are retiring over the next 10 years. This is 25% of the current US population. Due to the economic downturn, these retirees are looking for city amenities, a low cost of living, proximity to quality health care, and they are willing to relocate to find this. Lompoke offers a balanced combination of city amenities with the lowest cost of living in Santa Barbara. This development that we have planned on our land includes a 55 and older community for retirees, and an important thing to remember about retirees is that they do not need jobs. For a city like Lompoke where 82% of the jobs are either government or service industries, retirees are a good fit. I urge you to adopt the proposal that was proposed tonight that would allow each, each landowner to use his land for the wishes that he has proposed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bodger.
My name is Kim Bodger, and I'm vice president in John Bodger and Sons Company. Obviously, I work with Jack in the same company. For 31 years prior to the sale of our seed businesses in 2009, I worked for or was CEO of the Bodger Seeds Division, which was the part of the company which grew the fields that you saw in the Lompoke Valley. I'd like to speak in support of Jack's comments with regards to two issues that we raised in our letter of October 1st. The first issue is whether our property, bounded by Ocean, V., Olive, and Bailey Streets, Streets and avenues, is prime agricultural land. Those of you who have followed the location of the various flower, flower fields in the Lompoke Valley may have wondered why, if this property was ours, so often it did not have flower fields on it. The reason is quite simple. For sweet peas, we consistently found that we obtained better yields if we planted further west in the valley. The difference was great enough that we were willing to forego the benefits of operating on our own land to obtain better ground elsewhere. For marigolds, our other major crop, this location was too far west and thus too cool. The bottom line was that we use this property only if we had run out of better land and better locations elsewhere. By no means was this property prime agricultural land in our eyes. The second issue is the need for a buffer between agricultural operations and residential neighborhoods as proposed in the Bailey Avenue specific plan. From my own experience, I can state that no farmer wants his, his or her operations to negatively impact his or her neighbors. We have always done everything we can to be a good employer and neighbor wherever we have operated, and this particularly includes Lompoke, where our roots go back many years into the 1920s. To add to our general concern, many of our employees' children went to Magalito School on West Olive Avenue near the east side of what we called our home ranch. The last thing we would want would be for this school to be impacted by dust or fertilizer or pesticide applications. At the same time, all farmers, including ourselves, need to be able to apply the most advanced techniques to compete in a very hyper-competitive market. Being caught between these two competing, conflicting needs is a, is a place that no farmer and no businessman wants to be. The proposed buffer zone in the Bailey Corridor is an excellent solution, in my opinion, to these conflicting land uses. I remember when I was first, when it was first described to me, and I thought at the time, this is really a good solution to a serious problem. As an agricultural professional, familiar with, concerned about the city of Lompoke and the Lompoke Valley, I still think it is. I encourage the council to stay the course and approve the Bailey Corridor expansion with its multiple benefits to the city and its surroundings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bodger.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Richard Quant. I'm president of the Grower/shipper Association of Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo Counties and Agricultural Trade Association. I'd like to offer to the city council tonight, in terms of making a decision on the I'd like to offer to the City Council tonight, in terms of making a decision on the Bailey Avenue corridor, I would urge the City Council that in making land use decisions, that they not base those land decisions on the basis of what individual landowners want, but what's in the best interest of the city of Lompoc. And I think you need to start focusing on what's the best interest of Lompoc. I am not a resident of the city of Lompoc, but my organization that I represent does speak on behalf of many of the farmers in the Lompoc Valley, who would welcome the opportunity to lease any of these parcels within the 270 acres located on the Bailey Avenue corridor. Because these individuals, these farmers, do not want to incur the disfavor of some of the landowners in that area, they've asked me to come and speak on their behalf. I've submitted you some documents tonight. The first document is the USA document entitled Soil Survey for Northern Santa Barbara County. That document actually has a map of the Bailey Avenue corridor. It has a soil classification for those soils in that corridor, so you can see for yourself. And then the report actually sets forth the classification ranking for the soils in that corridor. I thought I'd bring some documentation to the City Council to try to establish once and for all the value of those soils from an agricultural perspective. You can see the classification system for yourself. Those soils, of the 40 soils that are on those pages, those soils are clearly ranked as Class 1 soils. On the story index, some of those soils are above 85 to 90 on a 100-point system. That places those as among the most valuable agricultural soils in Santa Barbara County. There's many farmers in the Lompoc Valley that would give their eye teeth for the opportunity to lease one of those parcels and farm in that particular area. I wanted to, just today, I saw, I received a document called the UCSB Central Coast Survey. It was a document that surveyed the attitude of the residents of Santa Barbara County about agriculture. One of the questions that was asked is, what if instead of building in undeveloped open spaces, plans called for building housing on agricultural land, current being used for farming? And in which of the three plans would you most prefer? 13% said build up, 22% said build out on the ag lands, but 61% said don't build at all. And I think that reflects, I think, a sentiment in the community about the value of agricultural lands and the desires of the people to preserve those agricultural lands. What I heard at the City Council meeting the other day was this notion about, one of the justifications was to preserve private property rights. And I can tell you, there's nobody who spends more time addressing private property rights than I do. But taking away someone's private property rights involves, when a farmer, when US Fish and Wildlife comes out and says because of a sensitive species, you can't farm half of your land, that's private property rights. But when a landowner comes in, that's zoned for agriculture, and asks you to change that zoning to residential, that's not a private property right issue. You know, the property rights that person has are based on the agricultural land use designation, and I think that point needs to be clarified. Finally, I heard some comments about a physical buffer preventing any further expansions in Lompoc. I did submit another document to you that basically sets forth what other jurisdictions have done to try to avoid further expansions. And I would suggest that perhaps a green belt agreement would be appropriate in this area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Gene Huesman. I'm one of the Huesmans that own the 40-acre parcel that you're talking about. I surely want to meet some of the people that like to lease the property, our 40 acres. We currently have a very good tenant, Mr. Wyman. The problem is, our parcel isn't prime. And why isn't it prime? Because there isn't any water. There's no water. And we've found over 100 years of growing things or trying to grow things, that things grow better with water. We currently get our water, or the tenant is to the north of this, that's Mr. Wyman, and he has a very good well, and he's able to bring the water across onto ours. Part of the survey that you have there, the United States Department of Agriculture will tell you that property that does not have water on it is not to be classed as prime. We would like very much to have a good well on the property. We had, for the 100 years that our families farmed that ground, we've had a very good well. Then all of a sudden, a few years back, it went dry, and so we spent a great deal of money punching down another well. Mr. Wyman says, we didn't go deep enough. Well, we went down 100 and some odd feet of what it was before, and we got what is known as a duster. Consequently, we then rented the property to Mr. Wyman, and he's been an excellent tenant. We've been doing it for a number of years, and he's one of the better farmers in the valley. One of the things that we have on our parcel is that some time ago, the city of Lompoc formed a sewer district, and the City Council was the sewer district. And they wanted to build a sewer plant. They needed to do something with a sewer in Lompoc, and so they decided to fund it by creating a bonding area, a sewer district. And they didn't have enough property in town to people the homes, so they went out into the agricultural area, and they went all the way to the boundary line of Bailey, and they said, that's where the limit line of where we're going to be. And let's go ahead and put it out there, and those people will pay for the sewer district because after all, eventually, the homes will develop out there, and you'll be able to utilize it. We argued against it. We said, look, we don't have a running toilet out there. None of us along Bailey have running toilets out there. We still don't have a running toilet. But for $20,000, which was the assessment approximately, and coming up with $20,000 in those days for a farm family, it was kind of tough, but we did. And so here we are now. I'm not here to tell you that the property that we have, that we intend to ask for an annexation at this time. We think before you right now is merely a general plan. You're not being asked to put in a specific plan. You're not being asked to decide where the roads go or whether or not you're going to permit it. All we're saying, keep your options open. You've got a piece of property all along Bailey Avenue here. The county has a say-so over it. You don't. We currently grow things out there. The county says whether or not we can put pesticides on, or whether or not we can have a feedlot, or raise cattle on it, or do other stuff. The county says so, not you. But if you were to move your limit line out there, I think generally that you would then be able to step in if you wanted to and exercise control. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Huesman.
Mr. Mayor, the time is getting close to 11:00. We need to see whether or not the council wants to disregard the rules.
I'd like to at least close the public testimony so that when we pick it back up, we don't have to start over with another line that will take us all night. And I'd like also, if possible, to continue this till next Tuesday night, which is not a council night, but it's Tuesday, so that we can continue with the item and get it What are the wishes of the council? I think...
Mr. Mayor, I agree. I think we should continue the public comment at this point. These people have been waiting, so let's hear from them.
I'm willing to go and continue the public comment and then close it, but I certainly cannot come back here next Tuesday night to make a decision. So I will just move it on to a continuation for the next council meeting.
The next council meeting's got a pretty full agenda, if I remember the future.
I have a full agenda as well.
Can we find any day between now and then that we can meet?
Why don't we let these people talk first, and then we'll do the calendar thing?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I apologize, but you need to have a 2/3 vote to extend the 11 o'clock date.
We extend this to conclude the public comment period.
So it will only go until the public comment period, and then the meeting will end?
And then we'll decide, no, then we'll decide then.
Decide what?
Well, if the majority, if 4/5 vote wants to continue and make a decision, we'll continue. But right now, let's continue until the public comment period is through.
Mr. Mayor, I second that. I second continuing the public comment.
Ms. Roger, Mr. Durham, Ms. Martner.
Yeah, I guess so.
We'll continue.
I'm Jim Huesman. All my life, I've had to follow my brother around. He's quite a bit older than I am, so I point that out with alarming degree of regularity. He noted, and I spoke to this issue in the last meeting back in, I think it was September, that the city fathers at that time, he said that the city was going to grow, and they needed a sewer line. And so they came, they went to the Board of Supervisors and the Streets and Highways Act. They were able to get a bond issued, and as he mentioned, we had to pay for it. We're out in the county. We're not in the city. And so this was a forced taking, if you will, of our money. And those of us who happened, as my mother did, and other members of the family who lived within the city limits, we had the inestimable pleasure of paying twice because we had to pay the general assessment for the sewer plan itself. So we had to dig into our pockets. So at the time, as I mentioned last time, my mother happened to be the city treasurer. So anyway, so she, even though we objected, we paid it. Now, our family, we didn't go to bond. We scraped it together, and our actual number was $19,908. That was our, that was the principal amount of our bond. And we were able to scrape it together, so that was ours. Other members along Bailey Avenue, they went to bond, and they paid that plus, as I recall, it was 6% interest. So their numbers grew. But the bond amount for Bailey Avenue, to put that sewer line in there back in 1960, was $144,500. That's what it cost the citizens of Lompoc, us. So we paid it in one way or the other. And the representation, as you've heard the discussions again and again and again, was that we objected, but we stepped up to the plate and we did it. And it wasn't as though we could refuse, because if you don't pay the bond, they foreclose, they take your property. It was a forced taking, so we did it. So here we are, 50 years later, and we still don't have anything to hook up to. So then, back in 1987, there was a gentleman from Oxnard, his name was Dave Walsh, and he had property at the north end of Bailey Avenue. He wanted to get annexed. And it's like deja vu, as Gogi Bear would say, deja vu all over again. The same people who came in and objected then are the same people who've been in here tonight. They're all a little older, a little heavier, but it's the same people. And the interesting thing is that when that was being, J.D. Smith was on the council at the time. Many of you know J.D. And so we went to a local accounting firm, and we said, hey, figure out what our money would be worth. Because make no mistake, we're your damn bank. We finance this thing. You guys could have taken a loan, borrowed money, and built that sewer line yourself, or you could have put it down V Street. But you didn't put it down V Street. You put it on Bailey Avenue, and the reason was is because the city was going to grow to Bailey. That was the selling point. So we asked the accountant, we said, what would that money be worth? If the city had borrowed that money, what would it be worth? Well, back in 87, we came up, and I'm looking at my notes here because I had to dig it out the other day. Our money, the $19,908 in 1987, you would have had to pay us back $178,219. And that was calculated by going to Bank of America prime rate. Now, you wouldn't be able to borrow at prime rate. It's always prime rate plus. So we had the accountant do, as he took the beginning prime rate, the beginning of the year, and at the end of the year, and averaged them, and that's how we calculated. And for your information, had the people who objected before, I'm sorry, decided to pay it off, it would have been $1.2 million. Currently, that number is $6,450,000. And the amount my family is, is $860,000. That's what you owe us. Because there's no benefit. The underlying theory of the Streets and Highway Act is that the adjacent property owners, the people who are being assessed, there's a benefit to them. There is no benefit to us.
Thank you, Mr. Huesman.
Hi, my name is Lawrence Barbosa. Been in Lompoc 39 years, and my family's been here over six years. Mr. Durham, I'd like to ask you to show us the flag over here on the far end, if you could, since you're tall enough to pull it out. Show the audience. Yeah, could you show us what it says on there? I'd like to read that it says, "City of Lompoc, Valley of the Flowers." Exactly. The reason we don't have flowers anymore is because it didn't become viable in Lompoc to sell them anymore, and they had to move to Chile where the labor was cheaper. They got driven out of Lompoc because of the price of labor and restrictions, and the restrictions on pesticides. And I grew up looking at those fields, walking by them every day, and I love watching those field workers work out there, and I live across there today. I've seen everybody stand up to do the Pledge of Allegiance. Well, that property that sits in front of my house on 1600 West Fur, behind Megalito School, sits at the spot this nation watched flowers grow in the sign of our great flag two times in the 100 years. And that was the best prime spot to build that flag, and I thank Bodgers for allowing it to happen. I'm sorry that your business isn't viable anymore, but that's the best place for that flag to have been grown, and I watched it grow a few years back. And I'm still proud of that day, that you can look on the website, and everybody in the world could say, hey, they grew on this prime property, the flag of the United States, which I'm proud to be living in. I also like to talk, I heard somebody say that they're from Pennsylvania, and the growth of the area created jobs, and yet, they're living in Lompoc, working in Lompoc. So the jobs in Pennsylvania must not be that great.
It's not true. I live home with my parents. I miss my parents.
I'm also a letter carrier in Lompoc, and for the first time since Prior Creek has been built, I delivered mail there two weeks ago. Looks great from central. I drove in about a block, and it's a ghost town. I have about 20 boxes of mail MBUs out there, and I made MBUs, three of them. The place is a ghost town, and if they think that they're going to build the rest of Bailey and fill it in, it's not going to happen because people are afraid of the pesticides. They're afraid of the sewer plant that sits over there, and that's why it sits vacant. Another item I like to bring up is that military's families coming into Lompoc are usually young. They're coming here to train, and then they leave. They can't afford to buy new homes in Lompoc. Prices are too high. What they can afford is in the city, the used homes, not the ones that are going brand-new on the edges of town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, David Schwartzman, DS Ventures, one of the property owners of the Bailey specific plan. This last gentleman actually did make some very good points, but I think the flag in the country we live under is that flag, not that flag. I've heard tonight, and I actually think Councilman Durham actually has a good proposition. People should be allowed to do what they want to do. People should be allowed to do what they want to do. I respect Mr. Weinman's wishes. Our property is not zoned ag. It's actually been general planned for residential, so I'd like to make some corrections there. And I've heard somebody on this council say, it doesn't matter what past councils said and promised, because that's in the past and now we're in the future. Well, people rely on the cities for certain things. And I don't have a problem with setting back my property from Mr. Weinman's property. It's actually my property, I believe, to the north. Thank you, Mark. That would be the property setback. I would take that risk. It's an economic risk, it's a financial decision I make. And that's why, because we live in the United States. And as someone who is an outsider, and I'll be criticized, but there's people from the Agricultural Defense League and all this, they're outsiders too, but in the last two years, I put seven million dollars into this economy in Lompoc. Not anybody else in, in the agricultural defense economy did. So we actually created jobs, and I know this gentleman before me said Seabreeze is a ghost town. Our apartments are full. We're getting twelve to fourteen hundred dollar a month rents. The reason why Seabreeze didn't get built out is because Centex Homes, who is a national public home builder, pulled out and sold off their land in a bulk sale, and now they're trying to buy it back again, which is pretty funny. That's just a financial engineering and accounting thing. And I've heard Councilman Lingle tonight, Councilman Durham, also say economics can change, and you are right. And watch the stock market, because that's sort of a leading indicator of where things are heading. The stock market a month ago, we're here, was at ninety-eight, ten thousand. Now, a month later, my God, we're up ten percent. Things are looking a little better, things are turning around. It doesn't happen overnight, but it's a leading indicator. What we're asking you for is a general plan. We're not going to build tomorrow. Right, we do live in the United States of America, and when you take financial risk and to get somebody to back you, you got to show a demand. So we're going to build to the market constraints. But if it was so desolate, our apartments wouldn't be running so well. And people say, this gentleman says, well, go buy an existing house. Well, you know what the problem with an existing house is? Is you can get an FHA loan, and FHA lends in this area up to three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And if you're a veteran, you can buy a house with one dollar down, okay? But when you go to buy an existing home that needs eighty to a hundred thousand dollars of work, they don't finance that. So we are in a financing game here a little, two people. And the thing is, rates are so low right now, and you know what? Probably for the next three, four years, rates are going to stay fairly low. It's actually a good time right now to do economic development planning for the future. We're not doing it today, and you know, there's people snickering and this. You know what? People need to get along with each other, and we're not trying to take away Mr. Weinman's farm, but Mr. Weinman is actually about forty acres of the two hundred and seventy acres, okay? He farms some of the Hughesman's property. Does he speak for them on their property? They own their property, Mr. Weinman doesn't own their property. And this, this gentleman says, oh, people want to lease this land? Where are they? My farmer's trying to lease the land for less than me right now. So, you know, and there is an issue with water out there. Our property, property has problems with water, Mr. Hughesman's property has problems with water. It, you know what? I don't want to argue about prime ag land, just that I live in the United States of America, and I'm free to do what hopefully I can do, and I will take the economic risk to do it, and I appreciate your reconsideration on the matter. Thank you.
Barry Weaver, resident of Lompoc. It doesn't really matter, though, on this issue, whether I'm a resident or not, because I'd like the city council to think of the really big picture and what would really be the best for the city. I know you're tired, but, um, I, I, I got a little off my thoughts here, listening to these people. So I, I want to make this point, the, the fact that some parts of the city are rundown, people don't want to live there. People were saying they wanted to have a brand-new house where they felt safe and they could go down Bailey Avenue or, or, um, anyway, they, they wanted a brand-new house, and they didn't want to live in, in, in what we call our inner city, because it seems to be a, a general rundown feeling. H Avenue and Ocean Avenue don't look very nice. So they made their own point that we should do something to, to fix the city and all the vacant properties that are here. Now, um, my points that I wanted to make was looking at the big picture. And I was reminded of an AP story I read on a study by NASA. Uh, and NASA looked at agricultural land from satellite pictures, they had, they could make images of ag, of ag land, whether or not the city was grown over. And it was, it was, um, they, they came up with the, that ninety percent of our best farmland has already been paved over. And so the remaining land that we use needs to have artificial fertilizers added to it, which we manufacture by burning fossil fuels. So we're, we're dealing with a precious resource. And, and just a while ago, I looked on the internet and it said urban sprawl, almost a million acres a year is lost to urban sprawl, I mean agricultural land is lost to urban sprawl. And, and I think that the best for Lompoc, because the sign is, I want you to look at the big picture. The big picture is that we, we, we're an agricultural community. The whole world isn't born with a V-eight engine and a three-bedroom house. We have, that we have limited resources and we have limited agricultural land. Mayor DeWes, who, uh, Councilman Durham is appointed because of his death, he originally was for expansion, he voted no on the, on the Bailey Avenue corridor into, uh, into the development plan. He voted no, and he said, and this is his quote, "Only the city council is a real urban border line, the agriculture urban borderline. Only the city council is. You can make a law today and say it's going to be Bailey corridor, and the next city council will just go another mile over, and pretty soon, we'll have no farmland at all. And we'll be flying everything in from Chile or anything that's left over." I think you should look at the really big picture. We need to save farmland throughout the United States and the world, but particularly for Lompoc. We're not on the major corridors. People can come here to visit it as, for, as an agricultural place to, they, they have flower fields, buses that go out there. I'm sorry, I'm sleepy, but, uh, I really hope that you either look at the whole plan again, uh, because, uh, Mr. Durham's suggestion here seems to, to, to just reopen the whole thing. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barry.
Thank you. I'm back. Honorable Mayor and Council, if you're not glassy-eyed and tired by now, and hopefully you're still listening to us, hopefully your minds aren't closed, because if they are, and you've already made up your minds and you're just going through the motions of listening to us, then I should have stayed home with my feet on the couch, my cat on my chest, watching Hoarders. I hope you're really listening to us. I understand that some of these farmers want to sell. When I took my first real estate class at the University of Nebraska six months ago, it was a six-month course, there's only two things I remember. Number one, that it's real tour, not real la tour. And the second one was, if you want to make money, always buy on the edge of town, because it's going to expand. Boy, I'm thinking about those two things right now. But let me say something to our visitors, and by the way, those of you who are new in our community, we welcome you. I've been here thirty years. I'm also a military, ex-military wife, and we've been around the country. We chose Lompoc because we liked its size. Now, you might say, well, yeah, you liked it small for you, but what about us? Well, let me tell you, we're dying off. Our houses are going to be available to you, don't worry about it. But more importantly, we're, we're not obliged to grow for you, and we're not obliged to buy new, build new houses for you. If you want a new house, then go to Orange County, they got lots of them. Go to Santa Maria. They are bulging with new houses, and on every block you see three or four for-sale signs. They overbuilt. We didn't, thank you very much, by the way. And one final comment, dear sir. I believe that you're right, sort of, that people should be allowed to do what they want to do with their property, but aren't you people also battling this rezoning in town, like something that was zoned R-three is really an R-two, and if you've got an R-one, you can't put another unit on it? Because when you buy something, that's what is supposed to stay. When I sell my R-one, I have to sell it to someone who wants a single-family home, not someone who says, well, I want to convert it to a triplex or a fourplex. However, if you do decide that I have the right to do what I want to do, then I'm going to take you up on it. And I'm going to quit real estate, because it's really hard, and I'm going to turn my home into a house of ill repute, and I'm going to enjoy myself for a while.
I think we'll have some ranchers join you.
That is a very valuable comment she just made, and, um, I'll join her. But, you know, it's really hard to follow a speaker like that, but I'm going to anyway. Good evening. My name is Janice Keller, and I live and I'm happy to own an older home in the city of Lompoc. I am a retiree, and of course, I'm not dependent on Lompoc for my income at this point. However, my house is one of my assets. And talk about private, private property rights, more housing, my house value is going to continue to go down, which it has been doing. So that's a private property right. And Mr. Durham, I respect you greatly, but you have to understand something. There is a thing called planning, and that is what you're doing now. You're planning for the future of this community. And part of planning requires decision-making. And that's one of the reasons we have general plans and zoning ordinances. If your next-door neighbor wanted to build a high-rise building next door to you, if you go along the lines, and I'm talking to all of you, not just Mr. Durham, but he's the one that made the comment earlier, um, if your next-door neighbor wanted to build a high-rise apartment building, or right next to your house, if we didn't have planning and general plans and zoning ordinances, they would be able to do that. So that's what you're doing here. You're planning for the future of Lompoc. Okay, now back to my statements that I had prepared, and then I'll go on to respond to some of the other comments that were made. I have been involved with the general plan and its revisions for more than thirteen years. First as the Chair of the City Planning Commission, then as a council member, and now as a concerned resident. I am, by the way, also an attorney, but I'm not speaking here in that capacity. As a bit of history, prior to the last general plan revision, the Citizens Advisory Committee and the Planning Commission, both, did not recommend moving the urban limit line out to Bailey Avenue. That decision was made at the council level. The Planning Commission decision not to recommend that was made after hours and hours and hours of public hearings, um, with many more people than are actually appearing here tonight. So the council at that time decided, oh, they wanted to move the urban limit line out to Bailey Avenue. Well, subsequent to that, as is required by law, the issue was taken up by the Local Agency Formation Commission, known as LAFCO. LAFCO rejected the city council's decision. They said, no, you can't go out to the urban limit line. But I tried to get the council to change its designation and met with opposition, um, because many of the voices who put it there in the first place were still on the council, including Mr. Sminski, one of the prime movers for moving out there, and I'm sure he still feels the same way. So, um, and I saw the thing come on. Anyway, as for the lawsuit that a few property owners have been talking about, I say this. It's an empty threat. If they wanted to sue, they would have sued a long time ago. They could have filed it forty years ago, they didn't. Once you designate that land for development, even though such development probably wouldn't occur for some time in the near future, that very precious farmland will be taken out of production and we will have a dust bowl. There is nothing in the city zoning ordinance or the proposed ordinance for ag production in the city. There is nothing there. So there's no rules to govern that, once it's, you know, annexed or allowed to be rezoned or, um, general plan designation. And a final point is that I've under, I understand that you've changed nearly all of the shalls to shoulds in the land use and circulation elements. If this is indeed the case, why are you even bothering with this process? A should does not give direction, it gives an option to do something or not do it. A shall means this is what you can, what can, what you would like to see happen. Please go back to the previous wording adopted by the Planning Commission, a lot of thought was given to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keller.
Mayor, council members, thank you for your patience. My name is Brian Segi. I'm a staff attorney with Environmental Defense Center in Santa Barbara. I'm a resident of Carpinteria, and I just want to speak really quickly on the, actually on the point that the last speaker made. In reviewing the last, um, staff report, I don't know if I've ever seen anything like this, but in terms of the recommended, I'm sorry, at the city council meeting, where the city council directed the staff to change all the should, or all the shalls in that general plan to should seem very unusual. And as the, I think it perhaps evidences a misunderstanding of the general plan. The general plan is the constitution for all future development within a city, as the California Supreme Court said twenty years ago. And so as, as that document, it's the single most important document, it sets the vision for your community for the next twenty years. I think to go from the, throughout the CEQA process, the Planning Commission, and we've participated throughout those processes and have consistently been opposed to the Bailey Avenue specific plan facet of that, to change that to shoulds at the last minute, and I'm sorry to have legal citations at this time of night, but under Government Code six-five-three-five-six, those type of substantial modifications, um, within the, the general planning process should by law go back to the Planning Commission. So I think it's a more fundamental change that you've made, just within that context, aside from whatever the different boundary changes that may be happening with Bailey Avenue specific plan. I think it also raises some significant questions with CEQA, because again, the environmental analyses that has been done thus far has been premised on these provisions being enforceable and being followed. And just, um, a couple that are specific to, to Bailey Avenue, five point two shall protect prime agricultural lands. I've, I've heard some factual, um, sort of back and forth about that tonight, but that was a very strong shall, shall protect the agricultural industry. And I think those go back, to, to say that those policies maybe are enforceable or maybe not, will ultimately preclude you from fulfilling the, the role of your general plan as a constitution. And I'll just close with this, because I, I thought it said it so well. The vision within the general plan that's been described through the CEQA process is that Lompoc is committed to protecting the unique and positive existing aspects of the community for future generations while accepting the challenges associated with seeking improvement in areas of current concern. Lompoc's vision is of, is of an economically prosperous, compact urban place nestled among natural hillsides, it's actually pretty, pretty flowery, with undisturbed ridge lines adjacent to wide expanses of fertile agricultural land, and straddling the biologically rich San Ynez River, the community protects this rural setting by promoting sustainable use of resources. I just encourage the, the city council to help fulfill that vision by, by going back, by rejecting Bailey Avenue's specific plan for one, and, and going back to the, um, the shall, the strong enforceable language that has been in versions throughout the planning process. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. I'm almost ready to say good morning, but, good evening, Mayor Sminski and council, council members. My name is Christina McGinnis. I'm testifying tonight on behalf of the Open Project and the Environmental Defense Center. And I would like to discuss, um, points related to the revised project description for the Bailey Avenue specific plan that's been put forth by Councilmember Durham. And I just would like to say, I think it's evidenced by Councilmember Roger's question of, well, what does this look like? What are these maps looking like? How does this project configure? Well, I don't understand what it looks like. And, well, if you can imagine, you've received documentation on this, the public has not. We are very concerned that we need public input as to what the reconfigured project would mean on the ground, as well as for environmental impacts related to that reconfigured project description. project description, and whether or not the EIR analysis has efficiently addressed impacts from a continuing agricultural operation that would be nestled amongst urbanized uses that are such that is proposed with the Bailey Avenue specific plan. So we would request that not only do the public get a chance to actually see the project configuration in its new state as proposed, but also that the EIR analysis readdresses the issues as that reconfiguration would require. And also, I'd just would like to briefly state the policy changes from shalls to should. It really would have an effect on the city's ability to properly mitigate impacts of potential projects that would come through the county coffers for the 20-year planning effort through the year 2030, as this general plan is putting forward. And it does substantially weaken any potential for there being a nexus between mitigation and proposed policies. And the EIR must assess the substantial revision of the policies in these elements from shalls to should. The severity of impacts from the adoption of the general plan land use and circulation elements with these changes would increase, and the EIR must analyze these impacts from lack of policy language that would reflect the historic shall that's been contained within the city of Lompoc's existing general plan and also within the land use element and circulation element policies that have been put forth as part of the update. CEQA Section 1.151 to 6.4 requires that mitigation measures must be fully enforceable through permit conditions, agreements, or other legally binding instruments. This should also go back to the planning commission, as Mr. Segi had mentioned, under the government code section that he referenced, and the public wants the EIR is revised. And I don't know what I'm doing on time. I guess I'm still okay on time. So I will just also just lastly discuss the findings of fact. The finding of fact that references the exclusion of the Bailey Avenue specific plan from the general plan update references that the, including the Bailey Avenue, would incrementally increase per capita-based impacts, including population growth, public services, recreation, and utilities, and would result in additional site disturbance-related impacts, including construction-related air quality and noise, bioresources, cultural geology, and hydrology when compared with the revised moderate-growth alternative. So it says that the proposed project is considered environmentally inferior to the revised moderate-growth alternative, which we would suggest that you retain adoption of. I would also suggest that Class 1 impacts have not been stated here as part of the facts of support of the finding related to impacts from ag conversion, which would also, should also be part of this list, supporting why Bailey Avenue should be excluded. So thank you very much for your attention at this late hour, and look forward to your decision on this. Thank you.
Everybody seems to know me, I think. I've been here quite a while, many years as a matter of fact, and not just a few hours. As we all know, 50 years ago, a group of politicians chose to saddle future generations with a promise made to a few landowners without consideration for the long-term impact to the overall agricultural elements of the community and to the community as a whole. They left few obscure tracks to follow relating to their actions and justifications for their actions, and most of those have eroded with time. In order to help pay for the installation of a sewer line down Bailey Avenue, the county, at the urging of the city, assessed the landowners, even though the landowners might not get advantage from it until the abutting properties were developed. Now, I don't know who got the assessment money, whether the city got it or whether the county got it and turned it back over to the city or what. Apparently, there was a vague unwritten promise to allow development of the land sometime in the future. Now, four weeks away from an election, three of the city council members sitting up there may act to saddle a future city council and future generations of Lompoc citizens with potential development that cannot be contested. Now, let me elucidate on that. If the land is annexed to the city, and that land is designated residential, and the zoning for that land is identified as residential, if a property owner comes in and says, "I want to develop," you have no course but to go with it. You cannot object. You cannot deny that development. Mrs. Roger and Mr. Smensky are up for reelection and could be ousted at the same time. That would mean that the three people who make this decision or potentially make this decision wouldn't be around to be held accountable. And they would not have to deal with the consequences of their action as the new council would. I'm not going to question Mr. Durham's rationale and justification for requesting a re-review of this decision. I urge you first and foremost to reject this reconsideration. Mr. Durham made the right choice the first time. He should do what is right and ethical and withdraw the request. If he legally cannot do that, then I urge the council as a whole to do the right thing and reject the Bailey Avenue annexation alternative. We do not need the added development potential at this time since there is no current demand, and we definitely don't need to use up super-prime farmland for houses. If Mr. Smensky and Mrs. Roger cannot or will not vote to preserve our agriculture heritage and protect and save the prime farmland in this valley, then I urge the citizens of Lompoc to throw them out of office on November 2nd. It is that important.
Thank you, Mr. Browder.
Good evening, mayor, and members of the council, Ralph Wyman, Lompoc. Seems like we're here at a meeting that shouldn't even be taking place, at least this portion of it, but it has. And I'm a little confused with Mr. Durham's suggestion there that Mr. Wyman's property have a buffer placed on two sides of it as an agreement to allow him to farm his land. That sounds to me as though that's a taking, and that would not be allowed. He's not developing his land. He's farming his land. He's been farming his land. And how dare you come along and say, "You must put a buffer on that now, and we won't allow you, the rest of the property, to be developed." I don't know. Check with your attorney and see if that's not considered a taking. Anyway, I think you ought to stick with the decision that was made. The idea of coming back and changing your mind after it's been already decided is, you're going to make a decision tonight or next week or whenever, and then now, Mr. Lingle, he's going to have another suggestion. "Well, golly, let's go back and revisit it again." So how long is this going to go on? Like I said, this is a meeting that didn't, this portion of the meeting didn't have to take place. Your decision was made. You should have stayed with it. I'm sorry that those young people that are living in those nice apartments over there left because they really should go back and read the EIR on Abria Creek and read about the arsenic land that their apartments are on. And I'm not sure those filters ever got installed on that property. If you remember, they were supposed to have special filters built into those apartments in order to make the air breathable. Thank you.
Will Skyler, living in Lompoc, Mayor Smensky, City Council. First off, I'd like to thank Councilmember Durham for his conscience and bringing it back to the board. I think his explanation of the reason was sufficient for me. I'm sure we all read the Mr. Bodger's comments in the Lompoc Record this morning. I concur with those comments fully. What is the general plan? We're here to plan for the future. In doing this, we have discovered we have an opportunity to kind of square off one part of our town, get a straight line, opportunity to put an agricultural buffer in. Johnny Silva was here, told you, zero transfer of pesticides anymore. So by having a 200-foot buffer, we're planning, you know, a lot of protection there. What's going to come in the next 10 years, next 20 years, next 50 years? Plan for that. I have a little article here. It just happened to be a Santa Maria Times, July the 8th. Orchid community there's got one housing tract for 156 homes, another one, 138 acres that they're talking about for housing. And, you know, we're a lot larger than they are. So we've got to plan for the future. People will be coming to the West Coast. They talked about the baby boomers. I'm involved in a seniors group, and that's one of our number-one concerns, is when the seniors come now, they're going to be in better health than what we have, and they're also going to have money to spend. So the town that's ready for them will survive. The town that isn't ready for them will die. Thank you very much for your time.
Council members, hi. I'm Mark Anadi. I'm one of the owners of a piece of property in Bailey. It's the northernmost 40 acres next to Mr. Wyman's property. I put this back up, the land use element, because there's a little confusion going on. Let's look. Alternative 2: retain the low and very-low-density residential designation. Oh, so let me see. There's already a designation in your general plan that this is supposed to be residential. We're already within the urban limits. What has the city told us? What have they assured us that they were going to do? What's the assurances when we look at the general plan? And what's the city told us to do? We put in infrastructure from long ago. We have a plan today, when we purchased the property, that the city said this, that right now it's a retained low or very-low-density residential. That means we can build on it. That's what the city has said already. Okay? We have processed the plan because it requires a specific plan to go along in order to accomplish this. That's our property rights right now. That is where we stand. We understand that we're in the county and that the annexation would have to be occurred, but we never thought the city would turn its back on us and take that away, similar to eminent domain. Take our property rights. We're talking about taking here. That's what's taking, being taken from us. You're moving the limit line away from our property and throwing us out of being able to develop it. I suggest that you do leave the urban limit line where it is. I suggest that you do pick the project, EIR project, because the EIR project is a specific plan. It's not, this is not to be developed. We may not be able to get that. This will be studied again, the circulation elements, this boundaries, the buffers. Direct the staff to make sure that there's no conflict between ag on the specific plan and that. If someone, if Mr. Wyman and I throw out an olive branch to him to come in to the specific plan, there is a way to retain his property in ag if he wants to in the specific plan when we come back and bring it to you. We can provide the buffers. We can provide the information, the detailed information that Mrs. Martner wants, as far as what the circulation would be, exactly how it's supposed to all work. But right now, we're asking you to maintain the things that we have, which is the understanding that the city has. This is the evidence that the city has agreed to us, with us, the property owners out there, that this property would someday be developed. That's what we're looking for. We spent a lot of money on the specific plan to bring this up to this point in time. We don't have that before you because it's very, a much more detailed development plan where it spells out the exact details of what we intend to do with the property and how we intend to do that. This is what we're asking you to maintain for us so that we can come back and give you more specifics, exactly how certain issues and how interactions, how we protect farming and how we choose to do that. Whether or not you agree or disagree, everybody will have different issues. We have an older part of town that wants to do nothing but preservation. That happens. There's a younger, newer part of town that likes new in communities. They say it's safe, and there's a community out there because it's new and it's a bunch of people that move in at the same time and get to know one another like in a community when they first start. There is a demand for new housing in new communities, and that's what we're asking to do in the future. Today, it won't work. It's economically unfeasible. But when we do this, when we do this in the future, the city will benefit. It'll bring property taxes in. We did an economic study, and we showed you that we're willing to take the brunt of any kind of cost that this may associate with the city, that will cover the cost for the continuing fire department and the police supervision on this property, and that the revenue, when you want to have your economic developer or director come in, that you have the money and the feasibility to do things that you want to do with your city. It's economically viable. And right now, we're talking about saving an ag preserve. They're scaring you by saying, "If we get rid of ag land, you know what? You may not be able to eat." Well, I doubt that seriously.
Good evening, and probably by the time I finish here, oh, not quite. I was going to say, it's almost going to be good morning. My name is Carlos Yenez, longtime resident, although I don't live here anymore. My business is real estate development, and because of that, I sort of have a unique insight in this entire process. Approximately seven years ago, I was sitting right here in the middle of this room with the then-mayor, I think Mike, you were there, Bob Bratman from LAFCO, a couple county representatives, flood control representatives, trying to create a plan for this area. So I know quite a bit of the history, that what's gone on. The entire idea of the ag buffer was one of my ideas that I had brought in from the California Farm Bureau. It was their recommendation, a 200-foot ag buffer, and that's how this got put into Jack Bodger called me up and asked for help on this project because of what happened last time. There seemed to be so much miscommunication and so much one-sidedness. So one of the things that I did before coming to this meeting, and for the last two weeks, as I've walked the streets, I went up and down Z Street, I went up and down the neighborhoods, and was talking to people. And, you know, I find Joyce's comment sort of interesting. She said, "The citizens don't want homes." I didn't find anybody who didn't have one. You know what they don't want is they don't want dust. They don't want the smell of the rotting broccoli. They like the idea of the buffer. The people who lived there, one of the mothers who was here, she was going to speak tonight, but she couldn't stay because she has three children that she has to take to school tomorrow. She moved out of the area because every time that they plow the fields, rats migrated over into her house. Well, she called them rats. They're probably some sort of rodent. I don't know what kind they were. I had about seven people who were going to speak who had lived in that area or still lived in the area, and they had complaints about the agriculture production. Now, I just heard right now Mrs. McGinnis talking about, "If we convert this land, we're going to have impacts such as noise and dust." Well, that's once, not every four or five months. You know, in ag production, the impact is actually greater. We're talking about not having water. Did you know that ag actually uses a lot more water than the same amount of land in housing? You know, we're going to reduce water consumption by putting housing in ag. One of the things that I do have to agree with a lot of the speakers here, including Mr. Pierce, is that we do need to preserve prime ag land, and that is what the idea that the city is trying to do here with this plan. We're trying to put an impenetrable wall, and yes, I've heard it said that the wall is not going to hold, but that's the idea of the ag buffer. This is the end of the city. We're going to preserve all, you know, we're building a wall. This is as far as we're going to go. We're not going to go any further. That's been something this city has been behind since the 1960s, when they passed the ordinance that built the sewer system, that all these people who owned the land have been complaining about. have been complaining about. Now, they paid to have a sewer system in there so eventually they could build homes. You know, we have the characterization that we're going to lose this land immediately, but that's not the case. I currently have nearly 400 homes approved in this city. I'm not building right now because I can't do it economically. I would have to sell them for less than they cost me to build. Mr. Schwartzman has a plan on how he can build homes, and that's great. If he can do that, wonderful. But we're not talking about building tomorrow. We're not talking about annexing tomorrow. We're not talking about doing anything except for doing exactly what Mr. Lingle said, cooperating with business owners who came into town. They were told, "This is the steps you need to follow to get your business going." That's what the general plan says, what the urban limit line says today. And they were being led down this path. I know the Bodgers have spent a half million dollars already on environmental impact, city fees, all trying to get this done. Now, is their land prime ag land? Look at it. I put it up there on top. Their piece of land, which endpoints, is this piece right here. Notice the city dump up here, how nice and white it is. That's all diatomaceous earth. I happen to have studied their land. I'm sorry, I got it just really quickly. I studied their land. I had earth sciences do research on it. That land is 80% diatomaceous earth. It is not suitable for long-term farming. I mean, yes, with a lot of chemicals and a lot of pesticides, it can be done, but it can't be sustained. Thank you for your time.
David, I'm sure you were up here before.
No, I was talking about another issue. It's not my turn anyway.
The dust and the, right, and the chemicals, yeah. Oh, boy. You've heard it all tonight. You guys are gluttons for punishment. I wonder if any of these people are running for City Council and would like to reconsider. This is a tough way to spend your evening. So I guess I'd like to thank Tony for this opportunity to all get together again and reconsider this item. I really, we've learned a lot, right, Tony? I guess, really, what I'd ask is that everybody's focused on Tony and his concern about reconsideration. I'd put it to you, Ann and Mike, that you're the ones that should be reconsidering. Nothing has really changed. You've heard all the testimony. I'm not going to repeat any of it. That's why I waited the last. Everybody else took care of it. I will rebut a couple things. There's a misconception that the zoning of this land is whatever it is, some residential designation, and that it's general plan, some residential thing. That's totally erroneous. This land is in the county currently. It's general plan dagged and it's zone dagged. That's the controlling jurisdiction here, so let's not get confused about eminent domain and taking away something. That's where we are today, okay? Now, Lompoc has always been in a better shape than a lot of communities because we have a mix of industries. We have ag, we have aerospace, as you know, we have tourism, we have mining and so forth. And it seems to me it's kind of foolish to wipe out one of your industries, if not the most important one, to benefit something else. And basically, I guess, when I was much younger, and that was not, that was a long time ago, people said that the highest, best use of all land was urban uses and so forth, and ag was just something that you put up with until you're ready to develop. I think there's still people that believe that, but I think the consensus is today that agricultural resources are something that you want to protect. I think it's actually a national security issue. I think I've told you before, it's been a long process, but I used to say that if you don't like having your oil supply provided by some foreign country, how are you going to feel when you get your food somewhere else? Well, now I've amended that a little bit. You don't like your oil energy supplies coming from the Middle East, and you don't like China providing your operating capital? How is it going to be when the food this country depends on comes from somebody that doesn't like you? How is that going to work out? You know, this land is not an infinite resource. There's a limited amount of the stuff that Wyman has and what's in the lower valley. You cannot just surround Wyman with things and expecting to stay there. That has never worked. You can look in Greta Valley, you have your little token pieces of ag. That doesn't work, Mike. That doesn't work. You know, finally, property rights, whose property rights rule supreme here? Bodgers or Wyman's? What about the rest of people in the valley? They're all tied together.
Thank you, Mr. Abbott.
Do you have any questions in my last 10 seconds?
Anyone else that wants to speak, please line up now.
Don't start that line yet. He's talking.
Cut it off at the end of the line.
Thank you. I'll be honest with you, my throat went dry when my husband made that final remark. I don't know if I can talk. When he sat down, I told him, I'm not throwing him under the bus, but when he sat down, I told him I did not think this was an appropriate time to express his opinion on the election. I'm not going to apologize for him. He said what he said, and it's his right. I'm just saying, please don't hold it against me or anyone else that is here speaking against the reconsideration. The problem with, I really highly respect Mr. Durham because he's tried to find a solution here. The problem is that this is not just a disagreement between a couple of property owners that you can solve by finding a solution for them. It affects the entire community and especially the property values of owners of existing residential property. And there's a ripple effect, and the testimony about people wanting new homes only tells you more that there's going to be a problem for people trying to sell existing homes. And some of those are not run down. We put a lot of money into an existing home. We still had trouble selling it, competing against those. I know that the developer will try to do it at a time when the market is good for him, but the market may not be stabilized enough. He may be able to sell properties and make money because he's offering new properties, but it may not be stabilized. It may, will probably still be fragile. And when these things are thrown on the market, they could destabilize the owners. What I'd like to say is, it's too soon to make this decision. There hasn't been time for the public to review it. There hasn't been time for Mr. Wyman to review it. There hasn't been time to take property values into consideration, and there could be problems with the EIR. So I would ask you to not make a decision reversing your decision tonight. Let that decision stand. Let there be some more study. Look for some more solutions. Because although I really am glad that Mr. Durham is respecting Mr. Wyman's property rights and wants to not throw him under the bus, this current proposal probably would, even with a 200-foot buffer. And the best testimony that backs that up is Mr. Bodger. Mr. Bodger has wide streets between his property and adjacent properties, and yet he complains quite rightly that the city has hemmed him in and that he has houses on three sides and has to limit his crops. This proposal would do that to Mr. Wyman. I would just urge you to, if, let me put it this way, if you stick with your original vote tonight, you're not closing the door on Mr. Hughesman developing or anyone else there. What you will be doing is giving them the opportunity, including the developer, to come back at a time when they know they want to build right then, and at that time, they can ask for the general plan amendment, the annexation, and project approval. That future council will know what the market is, housing market is. They will know all these unknown factors that you don't know today, and they'll be able to evaluate it. A hasty decision made tonight may hurt Mr. Wyman. Is it fair to drop this on him and on a public that if they read the staff report, wouldn't even know what you were going to do tonight? I looked at the staff report. I read the EIR. They're both deficient in advising the public and Mr. Wyman, what's happening here? I know that Mr. Durham wants to settle this quickly, and I really appreciate that, but sometimes you need to take some time. So let the developers come forward when they have a project ready to go. The door will still be open for them to make their best case, and by then, maybe there will be some stable, better stabilization of product, and Mr. Wyman may have worked out his problem with it, too. Let me see, what else did I want to say? I'll tell you, everything went blank when he said that. I'm not kidding. Let me see, I'm going to get it when I get home. Anyway.
I'll go home with you.
Okay, please do. Well, anyway, hemming Mr., hemming Mr., saying that whoever wants to farm can farm and whoever wants to develop can develop, but Mr. Wyman gets hemmed in, that's like saying, "Mr. Wyman, you can go ahead and run the marathon." Okay, you can go ahead and run the marathon, but we're going to tie your legs together. His crops will still be hobbled. His farming will still be hobbled. I apologize for going off.
Thank you. Mr. Tripp is the last speaker.
Dave Pierce, I still live in Lompoc. I spoke earlier in response to a comment about pesticides, so I won't mention that again. I was delighted to hear Richard Quat speak. I've opposed him in so many other settings on the pesticide issue, but tonight, we agree. The value of the farmland is obscured by the Bodger comments. It wasn't suitable for their agriculture, but clearly, the classification is not for that type of crop alone, and so one should consider the quality of farmland based on the information provided by those people who classify the soils. The question about whether you should think globally and act locally comes up here. The responsibility of the City Council is to the whole city of Lompoc and to make sure that it doesn't develop urban sprawl or a blighted downtown area, both effects, from growing beyond the normal limits of commerce and communication within the city limits. All country, all countries in the world now recognize the damage caused by urban sprawl, but it seems to be something that doesn't get discussed in Lompoc. This expansion of Lompoc to Bailey Avenue represents the most egregious offense in this area. And when the City Council overturned the recommendations of the Planning Commission and proposed expanding to Bailey Avenue, LFO denied it because it went onto prime agricultural land. Tonight's discussions will not receive much, much more favorable response from LFO if the decision is to go to Bailey Avenue again, I propose. And it just looks foolish for the city of Lompoc to go along on this path of obsolete planning and the kinds of mistakes that have been made in the last 100 years, destroying cities all over the country and all over the world by allowing urban sprawl. You should be talking about that here. You should say, "We should not expand the city beyond its current development limits. We should expand within the city and along the corridors of communication and supply and resources." That's the sensible thing to do. That's what modern planning does. If there's a question about this on the part of City Council, I think you should all sit in on a course on urban planning, because these questions have been answered elsewhere repeatedly. It seems like it's time to put this to bed and to not try to expand the city onto this prime agricultural land and to not take those actions that would destroy the community in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce.
Four minutes, 20 seconds. I'll talk fast. I'm opposed to the Bailey Avenue extension, and I've lived here since 1970. This is the first time I have ever spoken on this issue ever. Does the wishes of the property owners outweigh the wishes of the majority of the wishes of the residents of Lompoc? I have my notes here, so some of this is kind of sporadic here. I'm not sure where Mr. Wyman's property is. I get lost in a lot of this stuff. Mr. Durham, I saw a couple PowerPoints in the last two speakers back, had a PowerPoint up there. Mr. Durham, I guess, brought up something that was new, but I'm not sure if it was new because somebody said, "No, that was line number three," and some text was highlighted or something. It would have been really nice if Mr. Durham had even an overhead projection or a PowerPoint or something with a map showing me what he was talking about, because when I hear Central Bailey hear this, that, I kind of not sure what he's talking about. Just listening to it in the audience, it's not, I can't grasp it totally. The other comments I had, I watched the rebroadcast of the other two meetings, or actually, I guess it's three now, I'm not sure. Anyway, there was discussion of the Bodger field and how the dust, pesticide, or whatever, was flowing into the elementary school. And, you know, I know we can't tell people that you have to farm this way, or you have to grow a certain crop, or this or that, but I think that maybe they should consider in, at least in the Bodger section, should they, they should consider organic farming. And I know it takes like four years of what's called transitional organic in order to get qualified as organic, but that might be something they may want to look into. I'm not sure if the vote was for one yes and four no's, or whether it was two yeses and three no's, but anyway, the last time when Mr. Durham voted, he voted against, if I recall it properly. And, you know, as council members, you need to listen to the public, and then some of the stuff you hear at farmers' market and other people, any of those special interests or people that, you know, while you're at the bank or different places, developers that you talk to, but you kind of get an overall thing of what people are saying and what you've heard at farmers' markets and stuff like that, or Old Town Market. And when you're at the council member and people, council meeting, and people are speaking, and you're listening to the public, you know, you should probably keep a tally on how many people were opposed and how many people were for, for the particular thing. And it seems to me the speakers are overwhelmingly opposed, if you take a tally and you got a correct tally, but, you know. Keep in mind, when you do tally, those that spoke for or against and left because they didn't want to sit here till midnight or 11 o'clock or whatever. Let's see here. Those that spoke during oral communications about this issue because they didn't want to stay. New, there was a lot of, there was some talk of some of the people, new homes versus existing homes, and, you know, it comes down to new homes versus foreclosed, empty homes, or some of the older homes in town that are, haven't been re-rented. Farmland is not the answer, in my opinion. When is the time proper to expand? I think when the time comes, I think we may want to look into expanding towards the north, but I don't think we should expand, continue the Bailey extension. When the economy shows proper signs of recovery, or starting to show like it could recover, maybe then we need to think about going north or something like that. But right now, you know, going Bailey to me just doesn't seem like the, we're going to be like Santa Maria. There'd be blocks and blocks of empty houses in tidy little neighborhoods with 90% non- rented houses are owned.
Thank you, Mr. Tripp. Public comment period on this item is closed. It strikes me, would you put the options up for just a second? I propose something right, right now. It strikes me that the EIR project, this is the first alternative, does everything that Mr. Durham wants, the one above the blue line. We might be able to, if we take just a couple of minutes, I'll move if we approve that first item, because I think it does, we already have, we already have goals and measures in the plan that we've approved that say that any new development will have a buffer on all sides between ag and residences. So that would, Mr. Harmon, that would be on, not on the ag side. That would be the developer's side has to provide the buffer. It's not a taking of any of Mr. Wyman's property. It would be anybody that wants to develop adjacent would have to provide that buffer, and that's been an offer that's already been made. I'll throw that out in the hope that we've heard this before and we've before and before, that maybe we can just comment on and vote on it. Otherwise... Otherwise, then I'll ask the council, do I have a second on the motion?
I'll second it.
One at a time. Who wants to speak for or against the, we have a motion and a second. No one speak? Mr. Lingle.
I'll speak against the motion. You know, nothing I heard tonight changed my mind from last time. I admire Mr. Bodger and the rest of the property owners, what they've done. However, you know, this is, you know, we hear it both ways. It's prime ag land, it's not prime ag land. But I've heard more people and more studies indicating that this is prime ag land. As I said last time, this, we are an agricultural community. I'm proud of being an agricultural community. We, we need to develop from the inside instead of outside. Urban sprawl was mentioned earlier. That's exactly what we'd be ending up doing. So nothing I heard tonight has changed my mind, so I'll be voting against the proposal.
Ms. Martner.
I will be voting against the motion as well. Everything that was said tonight, in many ways, had been said before with a couple of new additional things. Tonight was the first time that we heard about how really our property values are going to be hurting by potential new development. When we had the developers bring this economic stimulus ideas that this would be very good for the city, they failed to take into account how much are we going to lose by having all our property values be devaluated. That's a new thing that I heard tonight, and I heard it and I understood it. I also heard tonight that we apparently have known that we have had some issues regarding pesticides, and there was a study that either said yes or no. And if we had some issues, I would like to ask, why hasn't the city done anything about it? It's been over 20 years. We have a council member here, Mr. Mayor, that has been in this council for 20 years. If he thought that we had, we were exposing our residents to harmful chemicals, why didn't he propose this famous buffer zone that is supposed to going to protect us? The only thing that I always hear is that we want to annex the land to build and build houses. And by the way, we're going to get this nice little buffer zone that will come along with it. There is no evidence anywhere that says that this buffer zone will protect our residents. I haven't heard it tonight. I, I really cannot even go through arguments that we need a buffer zone in the north and the south, and Mr. Weinman will be able to farm or not farm. There is no evidence, I haven't even seen the map, that apparently the council member sitting here right next to me has some idea. I haven't seen it. And if I haven't seen it, you certainly have not seen it. So here are we going to be making a decision with some ideas that we have on something that we have not even presented to the public. So I do have issues with that. I will stand, I really have not heard anything tonight that will change my mind, and I am against the annexation.
Tony.
Well, obviously, I made the right decision to reopen this, just on the numbers alone. Because the first time that we talked about this, there were only 16 people that spoke. We had over 34 tonight, so I was right. There is a God. I still, my biggest concern was protecting Mr. Weinman and also protecting the rights of the owners. I still put a lot of weight, you know, I look at it this way. Out of everyone that spoke tonight and prior meetings about opposing the Bailey extension, why haven't you purchased the property from the owners? I think it's a valid question. We, we hear state officials, we hear people that live in the community that say that this should stay ag land. So in essence, you're forcing these people, these owners, to stay ag no matter what happens. It's exactly what you're doing. What we're asking is to retain the urban limit line, which gives the owners the right to come back to us at a later time and ask to be incorporated and to be able to develop. It's been said several times over the last month, this isn't going to happen tomorrow. There is absolutely nothing that we're going to, this is a vision of the future of Lompoc. It has nothing to do with what's going to happen tomorrow or in the next five to 10 Because, and the reason I say that is because we've been talking about it since 1979, actually 78, 78. So this isn't going to happen tomorrow, but I do feel that these people that own the property have the right, because they do own that property, to do as they so fit. Now, maybe that's just old school to me, but if I own a piece of property and you come to me and say that you want it, well, you're going to pay for it. I'll be happy to sell it if I'm ready in the, you know, in the market, but you're going to pay for it. So I don't see the rationale, and I don't see the sense in telling these owners that because they purchased years ago property, that years ago, like the gentleman spoke earlier about the flag, that was the prettiest thing I've ever seen. In fact, when I went back to Illinois on vacation, they had that in the post office in Illinois, my hometown, a picture of the American flag at Bodger Field. They can't grow them anymore. They can't. And a lot of it has to do with our economy. So I still hold with my feelings that we need to give the people that own the property and the people that farm the property the opportunity to do so. So I, I still stand with my proposal.
Ms. Rouge.
In spite of being threatened with losing my job, which I dearly love here, I do agree with Councilmember Durham. The general plan can be changed four times a year. So no matter who's sitting up here, you all can come back and we'll go through this again and again and again. So right now, you know, I was thinking, boy, this is really crucial and so on, but it's going to flip again. Because come January, February, someone's going to come up and ask that this be looked at again. So I'm going to stick to my vote. I think it's a vote for the future. I do think that the property owners have a right, no matter, you know, what anybody else says, to do what they want with their property. If we don't do this in this, in the city, those property owners will go to the county and you will have a project out there, whether you like it or not. And you won't have a choice on how it's going to look, what's going to happen, because the county will decide, because it is on county property. This whole annexation, if that's what comes to pass, has to go through LAFCO. It's a long process, and I'm not even sure LAFCO would approve it at this point in time. So it's, it's a lot of things in the future, a lot of uncertainties, and so on and so forth. So I'm going to stick to my vote and keep the urban limit line where it is. And as I say, you know, we'll just let, see what happens. And you can do what you want to, Mr. Browder.
As I said last time, I first became involved in supporting this project because of the buffer. I think that is very good planning. I think anything, any effort to allow incompatible uses immediately adjacent to each other is very, very poor planning. In this document, there are goals for the future. Those goals have been approved unanimously. Two weeks ago, Mrs. Martner, Mr. Lingle, approved a goal for the future that said that whenever residences are developed next to agriculture, there will be a buffer zone because they're incompatible. And it will be used to separate the, the, the health and the dust and the noise issues. And that's in here and was approved as a goal for the next 30 years. There's a goal that says, that's goal two. Goal three, that the city will offer incentives when developments provide substantial benefits such as enhancement of health, or higher-paying jobs, or generation of increased taxes. And we've seen that that will happen. Policy four says the city shall consider annexations that do not adversely affect city fiscal health and provide the needed amenities such as parks, recreation, and other public facilities. This project that we're looking at right now offers us a softball complex, a police activities league gymnasium as amenities during the development. It does provide jobs. We have, we have passed the goals saying, "This is what we're going to do," and then we got a project in front of us that does it, and we got two no votes. I don't understand the inconsistency. There is no place else in the city where we can build agriculture, or build residences next to agriculture. There's no place else we can put houses in immediately adjacent to agriculture, except on the West End. Why is that goal even in here then, if we're not going to apply it? I, for all the reasons I said last time, for all the, the expectations for the jobs, the benefits, I think that this is good for the city, and I will vote to, for the motion before. And we've each had our turn speaking, so I'll call for the question. And that passes on a three to two vote. We still have some other items to be, to take in care of. You want to try to do those before the meeting two weeks from now, or do you want to try to, try to squeeze them in on the meeting two weeks? Okay. Two, two, two weeks for, no, we'll finish the maps, which should go rather quickly, and we'll approve the EIR. For the next council meeting?
Yes.
Yes. Do we want to start at six? You, you want to, you want to try and start at six that night?
Yeah.
We've got to finish this up.
No, I think we should just have a scheduled, normal meeting.
Normal meeting, okay. Please, can you take your discussion outside? We've still got a couple of items here. Written communications. I don't, other than the issues before us tonight, oral communications, two minutes maximum. Anyone like to speak? Those will come back at the next regular meeting, which will be the second meeting in October, the third, yeah, the third Tuesday in October. Additional development agency or council requests, comments, meeting reports. Seeing none, if there's no, yes?
Yes, I do have a council request, which was actually born out of some of the comments today. And I guess this is a question for the legal council. It was said that by changing the words from shall to should, there is a government code that we may be not looking at. I would like the council to reconsider and discuss all of those changes that we made between shall and should, because I don't think that I've been given enough legal counsel regarding this. I mean, this is something that just came up with some government code. I never heard about it. I haven't been advised legally of this, so I would like to revisit and have the opportunity to understand the issue, the same way that Councilmember Durham liked to revisit something because he needed to look at it again. I would like to look at this again. I would need two votes for that.
We've got a motion to reconsider the, the changing of the, of the goals and, and measures and initiatives.
I am not asking to change the goals. I'm asking to revisit the issue and understand the issue from the legal perspective, which was not discussed at the time the decision was made.
This is something that you know off the top of your head?
There's nothing in the action that you took last time to change shall to should that causes me concern legally if there was a court challenge that somehow was trying to challenge the fact that you were changing shall to should.
No, it's the question that if we are changing that, it has to go to the planning commission. There is apparently a government code that says so, as I was instructed tonight.
That's not, that government code section doesn't specifically require you to have to do what they were saying you had to do. You did not have to send this, the planning, you did not have to send the suggested changing from shall to should back to the planning commission for the planning commission to consider it first, before you made that decision.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, then we will consider this meeting adjourned.